Can you guys hear us? Is there a phone?
He is sitting.
He's sitting?
Yeah.
He said, "Truce."
Okay, let's have a reading started. Call this spokesman to the city council before. Looks like we're not starting with a pledge of allegiance. What's happening here? Don't always start with a pledge of allegiance.
This is what we need, sir.
So I think we probably do a pledge of allegiance. We're gonna ask more about Justin for events. Who else is with Justin Jackson?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Okay, we're gonna start with swearing in the new elected officials. And we'll get started with swearing in of Bill Johnson and James, so he can be seated with this over the dice. So if you'd like someone to do this one, please come up. I think you have the oath. I did.
Is there a Bible?
There is a Bible. You good? Your questions, are you good? Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I, Justin James.
I, Justin James.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of councilmember to the best of my ability.
Of councilmember to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sir?
Oh, councilmember, you're not gonna sit up, huh?
Get out the cheese seeds.
Sophie, would you like to show her a moment? I'm gonna be swearing in, Councilman. Lisa Brandon Watson. Hi, Lisa Brandon Watson.
Hi, Lisa Brandon Watson.
Do you affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
Duties of the office of councilmember.
The duties of the office of councilmember.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So I do swear.
So I do swear.
Okay, we've got one more swearing in, that's please for me, and Sophie, Sophie, come back. Chief Lieutenant Kennedy.
I, Thomas L. Show.
I, Thomas L. Show.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office to the mayor. That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor to the best of my ability.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Anne, Anne, would you know anything?
It's a good safari.
Which?
It's a bunch of numbers in the puzzle. And then Chief Terry, we're down to guess.
Okay, we have some business to take care of this evening. First item is election of the vice mayor. Do we have Vice Mayor Faith on the phone?
He is on the phone.
Vice Mayor Faith has been quiet. All right. Vice Mayor Faith has been Vice Mayor for, I think, sixteen or seventeen years. So I'm looking for a nomination either of a new Vice Mayor or a re-nomination of the current Vice Mayor. Councilor Romack.
I'd like to nominate Paul Faith as Vice Mayor for the city of Chicago.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd like to second.
All right. Are there any other nominations from the council? Seeing that all is in favor of Vice Mayor Faith continuing as Vice Mayor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Vice Mayor, it's unfortunate you weren't here to object, but you're Vice Mayor again. But it's really... So the next thing is the appointment of council representatives to different entities. There are city boards and commissions, specifically DRB, I think is the one that's most critically correct. And then we have representatives at Westmark and the Southwest Valley Chamber that would need counsel, we can need councilmen to participate in one of those three things. So I need nominations from the council, or we will draft somebody later.
Which, which there?
Uh, Westmark, the Southwest Valley Chamber, and DRB.
I'm representing Westmark already.
Okay. No, you can, you can fulfill our C I. Are you, who are you representing?
I'm on.
Who are you representing on Westmark's board?
I'm on the board.
But who do you represent?
City of Westmark.
Okay.
Paul Fane was in progress.
Okay, so we need to re-appoint you.
Oh, I nominated myself.
I'd like to nominate Anne.
Okay, is there a second? Alex says a second. Is there a ground swell of others who want the spot? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you're officially again on Westmark. Now we need the Southwest Valley Chamber, which in the past has been Councilman Claire, but Councilman Claire is not in town very much as much as before. So we need a new representative to be on the Southwest Valley Chamber.
I saw.
You'd be happy to do that?
Exactly.
Perfect. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody else interested in doing that job? All right, all those in favor of Lisa taking part in the Southwest Valley Chamber, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Final one is DRB. We need someone on DRB. We had Councilman Romack in the past, but Councilman Romack has asked that we excuse his service. You can decide to excuse it if you'd like, if someone else has stepped forward. If not, then we'll have to draft somebody, so.
Could I make, can I, Ronnie, are you asking to be offered that?
I've been out of town for the vast majority of the last year. It's been really hard to try and catch them, especially live. So right now, it's not a good fit for my time.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Okay, great. So is there a nomination of Councilman Romack?
I'll nominate John.
Second? Okay, anyone else interested in the spot? All those in favor of John Romack, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have our three representatives. That's perfect. All right. Next item is in our business section. We have a press, we have a consideration, information from the, from our staff, and I think a presentation, potentially from the property applicant for the property known as Vestado. So do you have a presentation, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, you talked to your yes, we do. The presentation was done by Mr. John Frohke. I'm gonna be chime in with a few slides. After stuff does our presentation, then we'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Brian O'Connor is here with us tonight. And his traffic engineer will be appearing with us. Be at the front for his monitor station. Is that correct, Ronnie? Thank you. John, would you raise it?
Thank you, happy mayor. Good evening, John Frohke. I'm your relatively new planning technician, or planning consultant, I should say. I've met most of you over the last couple of months. It's a pleasure of being working with people in the official part of the beautiful community. My dad worked out here in the South East and in the South East. In one of the homeless associations, it's nice to be back, happy to be here. As Matthew said, we've got a few slides to go through for you tonight. This is the Vestado property, also known as Development, known as the Thomas. It's over just south of here, at 447 South Old Litchfield Road. It's just down the street from our location tonight. And we've got some maps that we'll show you in a moment. I'm sure we're in the beginning of this.
Over there.
Over there.
Did you turn it on? On the left hand side. There's a switch on.
Yes, it's on. It's just one, one of the slides.
What do you know about destruction?
What is that? What is that?
So I do, it feels like it's the most likely for you. Maybe too far away.
So whoever, whoever's email, you got, hey, an email coming in. You mute your computer, so that we don't hear the thingy reminding you that email. Turn your email off.
Welcome to the city council.
Unfortunately, the kids are leaving, so now we have no computer experts.
Thank you, yeah, I'm ready. Thank you, Matthew. Just some background for mayor and council, and also for the audience. So Tri-West Realty is the applicant, as the city manager indicated. Brian O'Connor is representing the applicant these years, and I will present. And their traffic engineer, who I met with, who is in force of reviewing the application, will be anticipated, I believe, on the telephone. So last year, the project started with two land use applications, a general plan amendment and a zoning case. The site is developed. The general plan amendment, just to give some background on the site. The church itself is approximately 3.63 acres. It is developed. The request last year was a general plan amendment from P F for public facilities to commercial, and also rezone, not quite the entire site, 2.87 acres, with a plan to develop and repeat zoning, we'll be able to, next slide, please. Little background on the properties, as I said, 3.63 acres. It was developed, or is developed, as a church, who I got in 1976. There were five homes that applied to East Property Line, the neighborhoods of East. Those were all built around 1974. And as a city, we were incorporated back in 1977. Vestado, at the central Phoenix, currently operates the church campus on the property. They intend to stay on the property for a number of years, only the applicants need that. The request would be to introduce a commercial component onto the church campus, and we've got the site, we'll show you in a moment. For context, for mayor and council, and for the audience, so north of Union School Road is Litchfield Park. The site there is outlined in red. So it's right on the northeast corner of Union School Road and Old Litchfield Road. And then south of the site is the city of Addendale. We have the T R Berry Lake, some condominiums to the north of the homes that I mentioned, built back in 1974, to the east, near Churchill Street to the south. And then church and residential, I believe we have a yard there, there's a lot of vehicles there, and parks around. This is a little bit of a moot point, because since council took action right around the time I was starting last year, the general plan and the zoning case are really not on the table of consideration tonight, where we want to give you, mayor, council, and the audience some of the context. So the general plan amendment, we're just looking to introduce a commercial component to our general plan. And then zoning case, we've been able to have this slide. This is our zoning map. The site is down there, highlighted in with the red arrow. Basically going from public facilities to commercial. Next slide, please. The zoning amendment, like I said, was only for a portion of the Vestado property. The applicant's proposal, you know, mixed of uses, commercial might include some office, retail, maybe some restaurant space, personal services, maybe a hair salon, boutique shops, maybe some inclusion of a restaurant, coffee shop. There is a proposal to build a new building on the southern, towards the southern portion of the property, which we do about 42 acres worth of here. This is the applicant's site plan. So just some context. The church campus itself, for the two buildings along Old Litchfield Road, there's a pretty large building in the center of the campus, immediately south of Village of David. And then the new building that's proposed by the applicant is at this location right here. Citizen input, I did watch some of the prior council meetings, just to get up to speed with the project. We did send mailing notices about 350 adjacent property members last year for the P and Z public hearing back in August. Right around the time I was starting last fall, we did get a lot of feedback from the community. Obviously, change renders a lot of interest from people, and traffic, the usual things that we do, increased traffic, keeping the property, it's present uses of church, things like that, for sure. Next slide, please. So P and Z action took place that August 9th. The second bullet point, the applicant is a planning commission member, he recused himself. And the P and Z recommendation on the land use application to the southern border to, next slide, please. Prior city council action, you did review this back at your meeting on November 17th. And the direction at that time was for the city manager's office, along with planning, to continue to work with the applicant, and maybe come up with a revised plan that would be maybe better received by mayor and council, as well as the neighborhood. So we've been working with Brian, I came on board about the same time, been working with Brian, with Matthew since then, trying to come up with the development standard, building setbacks, landscaping, some edge treatments, so on, trying to protect the neighborhood of the East. And traffic, we'll get into traffic in just a minute. So we've been working for the last couple of months, trying to write a package forward to mayor and council that would be in keeping with the city official program. Next slide, please. So again, no action was taken back at your November meeting. This was where the focus was more on the plan development, or P D, or related, so that's where we're at tonight. Next slide, please. So a lot of our discussions since November focused on traffic, and on many of our projects, that's one of the number one concerns, was whether it need a staff for a planning commission council later on, is trying to figure out how to retrofit a, about a 45-year-old facility with modern, modern development trends, as well as the introduction of the non-churchable land use system property. There are three access points provided to the site today. The one on Litchfield Road, just called it, just called it, excuse me, Union School Road. And then two driveways that are on the other way, the drive, Sisterate Church. The north side of this market site. The driveways are, they're really old style. They were designed, you know, back in the seventies. They were fully have curb returns and more of the modern look, you can see, say, at Monty Point or the Litchfield Marketplace, on Campbell Back. So we've been working with the applicant, the traffic, this traffic engineer, on trying to enhance the access to the study, while also protecting the communities. Next slide, please. A big focus, really the last, onto what the applicant has been, I'll just refer to it as right-in, right-out, or wide road, is trying to give a right-in, right-out driveway on Union School Road. Right now, the site as it exists today, with the stock of church, does not have a driveway on Union School Road. It's our belief that there should be a new driveway on Union School that would be a wide road, right-in, right-out, with the idea of trying to keep traffic that would be generated by the future development of the property out of the neighborhoods. We've required similar right-in, right-outs on Campbell Back. We've got a couple of examples that Matthew brought to my attention, that I've studied a little bit, and let's move it. Next slide, please. This is one I'm sure mayor and council is familiar with. This is the southwest corner of Campbell Back and Litchfield Road. This is one where we've got a right-in, right-out thingy, Matthew, on next to the Cool Store, you know. The building east of that is a drugstore, and so, thank you. This is an example of where right-in, right-out works elsewhere in the short part. And then we have another, a couple more examples on the next few slides. This is just opposite of the Cool Store and the drugstore. This is on the northeast corner of Campbell Back and Litchfield. This is the Litchfield Market, Litchfield Marketplace. Recently annexed, or within the last ten, ten years, I'm going to fries. This is the Fry's, a major shopping center that I think most of us are familiar with. And if you look at the driveways, there's right-in, right-outs that have been used successfully, thank you, Matthew, on the north side of Campbell Back to provide access. Obviously, this is the title of the center, and what was before us tonight, the planned development, is a little less than three acres. So we know there's a different scale between a larger shopping center like Litchfield Marketplace versus this market. And then we have one I have heard something for you. This is a mile east of the Fry's Center. This is on the northeast corner of Campbell Back and Dyce Heart. Same thing, there's the right-in, right-out on the north side of Campbell Back. That, there's a turn lane that provides access into the site. And so we feel like we've used this successfully elsewhere in Litchfield Park, and this should be a requirement of the Vestado and Thomas project. Next slide, please. I believe this is your, Matthew, so I'll turn it back over to Matthew.
Thank you, John, we appreciate it. Mayor and council, sorry, back it up a little bit, so I'm not yelling at you. The P D document is in your packet. We have to turn it off, let's see. Try that. The P D document is in your packet. It is a four-page document. I'm just gonna turn that off and yell at you. Sorry about that. Again, the P D document is in your packet. Again, it is a four-page document. There are a lot of requirements. Someday, I'm not gonna go over every requirement. I'll just sit on a few of the high points. Again, what the P D document does, you'll remember in November, council worked its staff to negotiate a P D, and P D, of course, is the plan developer, with applicant, which is Brian O'Connor. Since that time, we've met with him multiple times. We were working on a P document, P D document before that, and we kept working on it. And so many things it involves, for example, it limits restaurant, total restaurant space of 6,500 square foot. That is in this document. It discusses ingress, egress, it discusses business hours. For example, business hours would be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. It discusses as far as alcohol sales. It has a long list of business types that would be allowed here. It has a long list of business types that would not be allowed here. The reason why is public facility zoning allows for certain planes, obviously, churches, smalls, et cetera. But it's very limited to the kind of businesses it allows for. So the way we do this, it allows, it touched on both issues. For example, under the P D document, a charter small would not be allowed on this property. But also, it allows for certain kinds of businesses that otherwise wouldn't be allowed there. So there's trade-offs for both sides, for both parties, in my opinion. I will say, Brian has met with us multiple times, trying to negotiate on this. I think we've made it good for trying to work together. And I'll, I'll talk more about the right and right-out second. But if you have one, someone here. One, a parking study will be required before the first and final phase of development. The reason for that is, we won't know exactly the number of spaces he needs until he knows what his businesses are. For example, a shoe store doesn't need as many parking spaces as a restaurant does, just based on zoning. And for that reason, again, we would require a parking study before the first phase, and again at the end, to make sure that this development has as many spaces as it needs. But we won't know that to many old businesses. Next, the current building wave of entrances would now become one entrance only, and a five-part of access. That would mean no exiting traffic on the building wave. And the reason for that is, what we're trying to do is keep people from going through the development that could ride on building wave and go around the Dyce Circle, and putting commercial traffic there that otherwise wouldn't be there. Obviously, if you're a resident, you live on building wave, you could come in there, but then you just go out and make a ride on Litchfield growing on that wave. If that makes sense. We're trying to lessen the impact of the residential neighbors for commercial traffic, again, is what we're doing there. Dumpsters will be allowed on the southwest corner of the property, as far away from the residences as is required. Just to be clear, it lets the corner of Union School Road let you in. The reason why there is, that was a frequent concern of residents, with garbage trucks in the middle of night. Anybody's ever heard one, they're allowed. We also put hours in there which they can't service, so it can never be done at 3:00 a.m. But this way, it would be as far away from homes as possible. The next one would be, the developer would be required to construct a daft seven-foot decorated masonry wall on the east property line. foot decorated masonry wall on the east property line from Villanueva to Indian School. If you go out there today, about half that wall is a five footer and half of it's a seven footer. Obviously, he wouldn't have to extend the seven foot portion, but the five foot portion, I'm not, I'm not the world's tallest guy and I can look over this wall and see right at people's backyards. And a little longer becomes a business development. And for that reason, we would require this change, that that five foot wall becomes a seven foot wall. I have told the applicant that I highly doubt that he could add two feet of the wall, I don't think he can carry the weight. In short, I think that five foot section would have to be torn down and a new section built. So there would be some cost there. But again, as John said, there's been a church there for forty years, so this would be a big change. So again, that seven foot wall would protect the homes and we'd also require some landscaping there in addition to the seven foot wall. Any questions on those points so far? And again, these points are close to all of the PD. The stuff recommendation. As I said, we've worked a lot to try and negotiate with applicant, we went back and forth a good bit between both parties, agreed on different things against the alcohol sales, we negotiated on that and we worked with applicant on hours. But one that we really couldn't come to an agreement on is the right in, right out. One reason on this, so city staff reached out to City of Avondale earlier last fall to see if they would even allow it. Just to be clear, Indian School is not a Litchell Park street, it's an Avondale street. So we have to have their permission to even do a right in, right out. They let us know that we could acquire a right in, right out literally on the day council directed us to do the PD in November. So we didn't know until that day, that's how it goes, okay? So we could do that. Again, as John said, the reason why we're doing that is simple, we want that to be the primary entrance and primary exit of this property. That needs to be the way that place customers come in and out of Indian School. Not of Villanueva, not of Litchell, but also of Indian School, this does. As I've told Brian, in my opinion, the church, this issue should have been there forty years ago, which you've got to remember when this church was built, the city didn't exist. There wasn't a city of Litchell Park in nineteen seventy-six. So it's not personal to applicant, it's that it should have been there all along. And I would also say that any commercial business that ever goes in there, we would require a right in, right out, it should be there. And again, you want that to be the primary entrance, primary exit. We wrote it in the PD to give it some flexibility, so he can work with the city of Avondale to find the best place for the right in, right out. What I mean by that, they give it a certain footage, how close it can be, but there's also a steel pole there that he doesn't remember, I'm sure he'll talk about that. But this gives him some latitude to work with the city of Avondale, put the right in, right out in a good place on Indian School. But it does require approval of the Avondale city engineer and also the Litchell Park engineer. Obviously, there's some costs there for the right in, right out, and also Avondale would require a median. They haven't said what kind of median that might be. That might be a three foot wide median, it might just be protected curb like having front of Fry's today. Again, we've given the applicant a lot of people work with Avondale to do that. Again, it would have to be both cities satisfaction. I think that's the biggest hinge point at this time, honestly, is the right in, right out. But we've met back and forth and this is one point, we honestly just couldn't come to an agreement on. So again, since the P and Z and city council meeting, we drafted a potential PD, which is in the packet, which will allow the property to move forward opposing the negotiated changes while implementing protections for the neighborhood as I was talking about. I look, Brian, I know this motion is certainly a big secret. For these reasons, staff can only support this project in the PD and drafting a DA. So just to be clear on that, we can't have a DA until we agree on the terms of the PD. When I say a DA, a DA is a development agreement. And we didn't want to spend the staff time or the money it takes to develop a DA if we couldn't agree on the terms of the PD, if that makes sense, okay? So that's kind of where we are. If today, if the council wants to approve the PD and if applicant is willing to meet the terms of the PD, then we will draft the DA. If council does not approve the PD and if applicant is not willing to meet all the terms of the PD, then we're not. The property stays as is, because obviously we can't have a PD on a property if applicant doesn't agree on the terms. So for that reason, again, staff can only support this project in the PD and drafting a DA if and only if applicant is willing to meet all conditions of the PD document, including the right in, right out on Indian School. At this time, that's our presentation. We're going to turn it over to the applicant this time. It's my understanding that he's going to have his traffic engineer online as well, and of course, we'll open up questions after that presentation. Thanks, Mayor. Brian, if you don't mind, if you want to tell me this for next slide, we've got a quick question for you, okay? We're a little technology challenged at the time, we're a little bit. Also, do we have this traffic engineer on? What's his name, Ryan?
Steven.
Steven?
I'm sorry? Steven's his name?
Do you mind saying if that's on line, it kind of hold here. Should be a button on the side.
Steven, can you hear us?
His name's Steven?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, the vice mayor, give it. Bear with us one second, Brian, if you know, if you know why, one second.
Yeah, I can hear.
Oh, he's here now, okay.
That's vice mayor.
Oh, that's the vice mayor, okay. One second.
Steven, can you hear us?
Brian, as old school, we're going to say in the middle of this, would you like, would you like to call in there and send it in, have a microphone, pick him up, I'll make sure, make sure we can hear. It's showing he's connected, we showed him on the computer, but we can't hear him, I don't think he's listening.
Oh, that was the vice mayor.
Yes, or listen. He says he's on. He is on, but we can't hear him though.
Can you hear us?
Steven, you muted, sir, just in case you gave him a couple of.
Hopefully staff is getting the message that this stuff is not working, we're going to have to make some changes or no more electronic, no more coming in to meetings electronic, this is, this is not working properly.
Do you mind this calling?
Oh, it's just on my. Where is it?
That's up from the.
Councilman will grow back, so.
Oh, Steven, John.
Yeah, I was saying.
I gotta call you back when they come to me.
Wouldn't pressure.
I see what that is.
Do you want to call from your phone?
Steven, can you hear us?
It's cool. He can hear you.
He can hear us.
He was saying, I guess he was trying to speak.
We just want to sit Brian's phone, I might not have that. If you call for it also.
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, is he going to speak through this?
Just set it underneath, under the mic.
It would be better.
Steven, can you hear us? Is he on line?
Steven, are you there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yay!
Can everyone hear him okay?
Yeah.
Let's go back here and hold it up. Thank you, mayor and council, for letting me speak once again. I didn't know exactly what to present tonight because I wasn't exactly sure what Matthew would be presenting. So, but I am prepared and I have plenty to be flexible here. So if you go to the first slide, the first thing I just wanted to make sure was clear is, you know, why, why I'm doing this. I've had multiple people in this room, in this community, you know, ask me, why are you still here working on this project? It's been quite a ride. And I say that to not sound like I'm complaining because I'm certainly not, I'm, I'm saying that because I believe in this project. And this project is something that I believe will be wonderful for this community. I think that it will bring connection to this community, I think it will bring a sense of another charming venue that we can have in our wonderful village that we live in here that we all love. And so this is for me, a legacy type project, I've kind of heard that with, I'm going to use Mike Hertz's example with their project, like this is something that means something to me and to create something for our community. So I'm here as a resident, I'm here tonight as a local business owner in real estate and as a local investor who's, you know, had a track record of creating other and improving other real estate assets in this community. So I just want to make sure that that is abundantly clear, that this is something that I hold dear to my heart and that I will see to be successful for many years and for as many years as we can. The next slide, please. Just quick history too, originally applied for this back in February of last year, so we've almost spent a year, I, I don't want to belabor this too long. My main point is that this project has taken many turns, it's been a constant evolution, it's been something full of negotiation, modification, compromise, and I believe we've been, we've been patient, we've listened to the community, the concerns of the residents and the city, and I'm proud of that. Again, I don't say that in a complaining manner, I say that I think it's a good thing because ultimately I think where the project stands today is in a best case scenario. And I think as I go through this, my theme for the council is that I'm, I, I believe that between Matthew and what we've worked on, that we are much more aligned than I think maybe it's that, that it came across. I think we're aligned pretty much all facets of this. And again, I'll go into some details on that. Next slide, I just want to go through quick highlights of benefits for the site. It's been part of our three values of preserving, preservation, community connection and preservation is something that is our value system for this project. And again, preserving the site in perpetuity, I think creates a wonderful thing for our community. So forever, if we fulfill this, this planned development, the site, the buildings, the tradition, the history, the church will always be intact. And I, I, that's important to me and hopefully important to all of you. And at the same time, I believe, you know, we're gaining an asset for the city, bringing what I, what I asked to call the Litchell Park Art Center, which again is another asset that we can use in our community for culture, arts, and the like. I think it's very important to talk about how we're minimizing the building envelope of this site. So as it sits today, public facilities, you can actually build sixty percent of that. So that would mean a ninety-five thousand square foot building could go on that site. And with this PD, we are going to limit that to twenty percent. So a forty percent reduction is an important number for us to recognize as we're preserving this. And again, the max site, the max buildings on the site would be twenty-six thousand versus what potentially could be ninety-five thousand. And again, the heights existing could be three stories, the PD brings it to max one story. Again, something that I think is very important to, to visualize and to have that sink in, I guess, for lack of a better word. And then some use restrictions under the new PD site. I think no primary or second, secondary K-12 school or charter school is absolutely critical for our community because we all know what's half a block down is our public school. So the fact that we can eliminate that as ever being an option for our community, I think is critical. And on top of that, there's some nuances, but again, having no continuum of care or convalescent homes, again, is I think uses that we technically probably could agree we don't want on the site. And again, this would eliminate those as options. Do you go next slide, please? So some of the conditions I put, I said it for, for my term was quick conditions to question. As of the last time I was in front of you on November seventeenth, we had this planned development document, I'm using the word ninety-five percent, whatever, the, the point is, is I think we had the majority of it, the parameters of what that would be set in that last meeting. And that's when I thought it was also a good idea to change course and for us to go down that path. And I've enjoyed working with Matthew, I've enjoyed working with John, and I think that we hammered out many of the remaining details and got that to a workable solution that we all felt comfortable with. And since then, I'm going to call them late changes, I'm a sports guy, I feel like the goalpost has moved a little bit. And some of the items is the applicant developer agreement, the way it's written is very open ended, so that's a little bit concerning. It's not that I'm in a disagreement to do that, but to just, the, the way it's, the way it's worded feels very open ended. And again, I feel like it's a little bit positioned where it's either this way or you have no PD. And I think that that's an unfair reflection of what we've worked on together. The second item I have is the applicant agrees to not sell or transfer ownership. Again, it's not something that I'm going to, that's not one that I'm against, I feel like it's unnecessary, but it's not something that if the council feels like, hey, we're more comfortable with having that in there, I'm not totally opposed to it, but again, I don't feel like it's necessary in this situation. The last piece is kind of the elephant in the room, is the Riro. You know, it's a, I feel like I've laid out to Matthew the impact that that has last minute from an economic perspective, and it's an unplanned piece of the project that we weren't necessarily wanting to deliver on. I feel like, you know, to, to bring it up last minute, and, you know, I noticed on there it said, and this is the first time I'm hearing that, that the ingress, egress does not meet city design standards. Again, that's new to me tonight. I think that that's something that this has been in front of the city engineers for almost a year, and I think it's, to bring it up now seems a little bit, I don't even have the right word, but I think, I think I'm getting my point across. Now regardless of this, I'm not a traffic engineer, I don't pretend to be a professional in that industry, and I don't even want to try to defend why to do it or not do it, I'm going to ask that the city, or excuse me, the engineer with Paradigm, give some background to it of real, a real basis, a real idea of why would, why would you do this, why would you not do this? Because ultimately, I, I see us being agreeable to potentially doing the right in, right out. And I have lined that up, what I would call a trigger, to when we build the fourth building. So my compromise that I tried to. So, my compromise that I tried to bridge with Matthew was, hey, listen. I understand the city right now. This is their time to protect your interests and to have a solution now because once that's gone, it's gone. So, I'm saying that I want to do a traffic study. I want to see what our real numbers are with this site. And what I'm saying with that is, when we have real numbers, when we have true data, let's take that. And if that means we need to put a right-in, right-out, then we will do that when we build our fourth building because that is something that we plan to do. So, I feel like that is a very reasonable compromise. But again, what I'd like to do is now have Stephen present and go ahead and give his opinions of the project and industry standards. Stephen, can you hear us?
Yes.
Are you ready for the next slide, Brian?
Can you guys hear me now?
He's got his own presentation. Sorry, skip to this presentation. Is it part of this presentation? No, it's a separate one. Couldn't hear that. One second.
Brian, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, everybody can hear you.
Okay. Let me know when the first slide's up.
Brian, we're doing, I'm sorry, Stephen, we're doing this old-school. So, I've got the mouse. So, when you want, when we get it all up, we'll tell you. And just let me know when you're ready to go to the next slides, okay?
Okay. So, are you ready with the first one?
Presentation's very good, you are, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Oros. I'm a registered traffic engineer in the state of California, civil engineer in Arizona and many other states. Been practicing civil and traffic engineering for over 40 years. Done hundreds of these traffic studies, traffic flow observations, safety studies, mitigating measures. It's been a continual learning for me through additional education and certifications that I've acquired over the years. And I'm very connected with the main engineering group that keeps everyone current on traffic patterns, causes and effects and things. So, a little bit of background to me, but I don't want to dwell on that much. So, let's go to the next slide.
Next slide's up.
All right. So, basically, the type of commercial project that's before you tonight is a local serving neighborhood shopping center. It's, not all commercial centers are created equal. There's no major anchor like a Fry's, a CVS, Walmart or anything major like that. And that's what makes this type of shopping center different and more attractive to residential use. The, there are driveway modifications to the city of Litchfield standards. The radius-type driveways to make the flow in and out easier to, especially with the old Litchfield Road driveway. Currently, it's a normal residential-type driveway design, not real conducive to traffic flow in and out of the intersection. We're proposing to improve that to the current city standard. And also, in terms of traffic, while it is an increase over the previous church use, it's still a very low traffic generator in terms of a traffic volume. When we did our study, that was, there wasn't any question about the traffic volumes and there were no comments about any potential impacts associated with this proposed project. Next slide, please.
Next slide's up.
Okay. This, you probably have already seen this one tonight, but I just wanted to highlight. I don't know if you can move the mouse, Brian, over by the S in South Old Litchfield. That's one of the driveways that's being improved. And if we look up at the Villa Nueva driveways, you'll notice that the side on the left is curved and the side on the right is the traditional type of driveway, which encourages traffic to go away from the neighborhood, but still allows traffic to get from the neighborhood to the center. And both those two driveways are designed that way. If we go to the next slide.
Next slide's up.
Okay. That was, that's a picture of the existing driveway. You can see that it's got the sloped-down curb and a very straight entrance. It's a little hard to see, but those straight driveway wings are being proposed to be consistent with the city standards. And they're going to have a 20-foot radius, which is a very comfortable radius for a passenger car, small pickup to turn from the lane into the center and exit out, depending on where they are heading. That's one of the improvements that the project is proposing. Next slide, please.
Next slide's up.
Okay. You can see the little pin on the project site in the middle there. I think Brian's probably pointing to it. That's a neighborhood-type center. So, that will draw from residences that are in the proximity, which is different than a more of a regional or a major-type commercial center. So, some of the traffic will come from the neighborhoods to this, to these uses. There will be other traffic that will come from Indian School, Litchfield, Dicer, et cetera. But there still will be a component that will be attractive to residents in that area. So, we just wanted to show that there's a lot of residential areas to the north and east on the north side of Indian School and other residences to the south and west. Next slide, please.
Next slide's up.
So, the finding of our traffic statement showed that there was no impacts. The volumes were below significant thresholds. There were no traffic impacts that were identified. So, there were no mitigation measures to associate or to fix any impacts. Next slide.
Next slide.
This is kind of what we were, the city manager was referring to as our suggestion for the right-in, right-out, which seems to be the main point of discussion. And since there is, what we've seen in many other projects is there's the fear of the unknown. Until we start to see what uses go in, there is concerns by some residents, business owners, depending on the type of project, that's, everything is going to be a problem. What we've seen is that over time, everything seems to smooth out. Occasionally, there becomes some issues with traffic traveling through residential neighborhoods. And there are tools to address that, to make it less desirable to travel through those neighborhoods. However, a right-in, right-out at this location, as we noted in our January report, may not be the best solution at this location. Some of the other locations, the Camber Black intersection, that was about the right-turn lane, that was next to the right-in, right-out, is a different arrangement. The right-in, right-out access is at the start of the right-turn lane to the intersection. It's also over 225 feet from the intersection. That operates very differently than a right-turn-in, right-turn-out driveway on Indian School at the project site. There is only 400 and, I think it's 15 feet of frontage on Indian School. The city of Avondale's standard turn lane requirements would locate the start of the right-in, right-out access at about 265 feet from the eastern property line. The right-turn-in, right-turn-out driveway per city of Avondale's standards is 140 feet wide, which puts the end of the right-in, right-out very close to the intersection with Old Litchfield. That is the challenge that we have from a traffic operation and safety standpoint is you have less than 100 feet for someone exiting the project site, merging across the right-turn lane with other traffic that's turning right from Indian School to Old Litchfield and with traffic moving at 45 miles an hour that's posted. That does not have enough room for traffic to merge. So, that is one of the traffic operation issues for a right-in, right-out, which can be very effective at certain locations. But that's the issue that we have with the right-turn-in, right-turn-out requirement at this point in time, is that due to the other constraints that are with this location, we don't feel that it's the best traffic safety viewpoint to install at this point in time to address a issue that has not occurred yet or is not likely to occur. So, that's why we're making this suggestion to improve the site as shown currently on the site plan. And before the new 4,200-square-foot building is permitted, that the study is done, or sooner if there's any identified traffic impacts, that things are looked at. There's studies that show how many cars are actually traveling from the commercial center through the neighborhood and continuing past the neighborhood to see actually how many cars are doing that. Many times, residents see cars coming through or folks speeding through the neighborhood. And we've found that in many cases, there are other residents in the neighborhood. Not all the time, but that has, we've seen that when we've done these studies. So, that's why we're trying to figure out the best way to mitigate the valid concern of unwanted resident or commercial traffic through a neighborhood. And that we want to move forward, take a step, and have the condition that says that whatever the improvement is needed to resolve the issue is put in by the property owner at no cost to the city prior to the next building. So, that's what we're trying to get to, is that we're not saying that the right-in, right-out is not a valid solution to a lot of commercial traffic access. It's just not, it doesn't fit at this location. So, that's the biggest issue that we have. So, I think the final slide is just thank you. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to discuss them with everyone. Back to you, Brian.
Thank you. Sorry, we can go back to the other presentation. We just have one more slide. Just let me go to the next slide. Just let me go forward to the next one.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all right. Is that it, Brian?
Yeah.
What was your name this time? So, thank you. So, with all that said, I just, again, I feel like we're 99.9% aligned with Matthew and what he's requesting. Some of the points of interest of the final, the traffic or the parking demands, have no problem. That was in our original. The dumpsters, moving the dumpsters, again, that was in our original site plan. Have no issue with that. Adding the wall, that's something that we really want to do. But again, I understand. Let's, I want to be a good neighbor to our neighbors there. So, we will, you know, add that wall in and landscaping. Again, we already had that planned. So, again, I just want to reiterate that I understand and respect the city desire to have a protection to make this traffic flow the best we can. And again, that's in alignment with us on this. We want to make sure our tenants and our customers have a traffic flow that works. So, what we're asking for is to not force it now because there isn't any specific identified problem. So, I am asking, let us do a study. Let us do the demand to figure out what the actual numbers are, the statistics are, whatever those are. Then we can make a decision of what the best-case scenario is and work with the engineers. And if that ends up being a RIRO, then we would do that. But again, I'm asking that you allow us to do that after we do the site improvements, figure out what the true traffic counts are. And before we can build building four, we have to address that. That's the trigger. And I feel like that's a reasonable protection for this agreement and for the city. So, I just think that, I just, I, I do wish that the presentation from staff sounded more collaborative because I think through this process, it has been. And it has been a great working with them and trying to figure out the best solution for this for all parties. So, I do hope that if there's questions, we can do the best to answer that for you.
Mr. Stephen, Stephen, do you have something further you want to say?
Yes, I do. First of all, I'd like to thank the applicant for coming tonight. Thank you. And I will say, we've worked together a lot on this. I don't even know how many meetings we've had on this over the past year. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I understand the applicant's concern and I understand his compromise of wanting to not build a right-in, right-out until stage four, phase four of the new building is built. However, I would recommend you do not do that. And the reason why I would say that is because it would be very hard to enforce that at that time. I think doing that will just get us to litigation. I think it needs to be here from day one or the project doesn't get built. I do understand the applicant's concern that, you know, we don't know the numbers yet. However, to me, we look at that differently. The applicant looks at it as that we need it based on how much commercial traffic we get. I look at it as that a right-in, right-out off Indian School unquestionably lessens traffic on residential streets, period. A right-in, right-out would be the main ingress egress for this property on Indian School. Cars coming in there, cars leaving there means that they're not on Old Litchfield. It means they're not on Villanueva. It means they're on Indian School, which again reduces, reduces commercial traffic on residential streets. So, I think that's an important point that we disagree on. And I would agree with Brian. And I think we're pretty close on the PD. I'm following 95%. I have no problem with that. I think our big disagreement at this point is the right-in, right-out. I did notice that nothing against the traffic engineer. I do find it interesting that he doesn't think the right-in, right-out will work today. It's not a good idea, but it might work when phase four gets built. That seems a lot to me, just to be honest. But I'm not an engineer. I don't know that field, nor begin to. But again, I would recommend that mayor and council approve the PD with all requirements therein. And to me, the most important one of that is the right-in, right-out, that it be built from day one. I think that protects your residential neighborhoods. I think it's part of this project. I could show it on the site map. A few of the things too, again, on traffic controls is that the Villanueva entrances is in the PD. One would be an entrance-only. The other one would be a fire gate. So, no exiting traffic on the Villanueva. Also, that the Old Litchfield Road entrance is there today. There would be no left-out of that on Old Litchfield. And the reason why is any of you that have ever sat at that red light, waiting to turn left on Indian School, it backs up like it is today, let alone any commercial traffic. And for that reason, we would allow no left-exit out of the church on Old Litchfield. Hope that makes sense. But again, that would be my recommendation, is that mayor and council approve the PD with all conditions therein. And ultimately, it's up to the applicant. all conditions therein and ultimately it's up to the applicant if he chooses to meet them. If he chooses to meet the conditions, then we move forward, we draft in a DA. If he does not, the project stops. That's my recommendation again, I thank the applicant for his presentation, also the traffic engineer. And welcome any questions if there are any at this time.
Questions, Councilor. Listen, Brian.
So I sent a text to Matthew after I sat down on a Monday two weeks ago to read my, his report at 11 o'clock and I sent him an email at 11:30 because I was beyond shocked when I read about RIRRO. We had never heard of that. I assumed in November, similar to what the applicant said, that when they went back to negotiate, there were 98% there and it was, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's and all of a sudden, right in right out and it's enough that it could crash this and so forth. I actually drove through the property today, even though I attended St. Thomas for a thousand years, when there was lots of traffic and the traffic made it in and out and it's not even, I mean, they're not going to have traffic like they had at St. Thomas. I agree with this engineer. I mean, this isn't Fry's, this isn't CVS where there's two, I don't even know where we're even thinking the traffic's going to come, maybe with what might come in the future, but I thought there was going to be a yoga studio and, you know, hair, I mean, you come in for an hour and you leave for an hour. So when we drove today from the post office, I'm like, let's just go down there and see that. It looked way too close, like you pull out and boom, stop sign's there or stoplights there and then there's a, there's a right turn lane beside. So I was, and Matthew was awesome and answered all of my questions, similar to he did tonight, but I still was completely shocked that, I don't know when the standards changed in the city that decided that that property didn't have the right driveways in and out. I don't know when that happened. There've been churches there for a couple years, but I was very surprised by this and I might, I would honestly hate to see this ruin this. Some of you know, I even questioned the neighborhood part of that because there's a lake on one side, a church on another, public works and Indian School. I know there's five homes there, but why anybody would drive all the way down to Indian School to hit that light, I don't get. Anyway, but I just, I had to bring that up because much of the other stuff I would say has been said, but I was shocked that that's what came out and that in my opinion is pretty big. So I wouldn't, I will not support that it's A or it's all or nothing. I just think that that's unfair at this point. I hope, Brian is, I mean, I don't really know Brian, I've only met him through this thing, but he is a citizen, he is a, he does belong in this neighborhood and he has kids and he has a wife and why he'd take advantage of all of us, I don't get, but I certainly think it's reasonable to have that happen later if the fourth building ends up being something busier, anyway.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, this, I'm not sure what happens here as far as the City of Avondale goes. Have you guys talked to Avondale yet? You guys been, Brian?
I have not talked, I have not spoken to Avondale. Again, I didn't know about this till, you know, after our last meeting.
Okay. Right. Then has anybody from the city talked to Avondale as far as the driveway off of Indian School?
Yes, sir. They're the ones that told us we could require it because we had to have permission from them to require that because it is in Avondale Street. The reason why it wasn't discussed before November was because they didn't tell us we could do it until literally the day of the November 14th.
The reason I bring it up is you notice there are no other driveways on Indian School all along there. Other, they're collector roads, Wigwam, both of them, Wigwam is one of them, but there were no other driveways coming into Indian School on the north, on the north side. That would be, that would be the only one. I, from the way I understand it is part of the reason why the property north of the post office hasn't developed is because you cannot go directly onto Indian School. So the fronts of the retail would all be facing the, to the south. And it really, and again, it really, you know, from a, from a retail standpoint, that is not a, not a good plan. So I just really question whether you're able to make a requirement like that, Matthew, and try to keep this deal on track.
Thank you, Councilor. Go back. One thing I would say on that is that we gave enough, we wrote latitude in the PD where the applicant could work with Avondale as far exactly where that right in right out would be. However, of course, before they can say exactly it's going to be right here, they want to see plans from him. They don't want plans from us, they want to see plans from the applicant, from the construction person, of course, you know? So those discussions haven't happened yet because in my opinion, he wasn't at that point yet. But that would be between him and Avondale, but again, it would have to be approved by our city engineer and theirs.
Is that right away wide enough to accommodate a decelerate lane? Because you're going to need a deceleration lane to get your pork chop or whatever you want to call that, for the right in right out?
Keith, have you come from answering my question? I see you nodding right there and you're saying it is.
It is wide enough to add another lane there?
Yeah. The current right turn lane is within right away, so it would be an extension of that more of us.
The current right turn lane, oh, to get on to Old Litchfield Road?
Thank you, sir.
Bill's Brian Watson? Yes, sir.
I have just one concern because I saw the traffic numbers and they seem like the traffic numbers for the businesses, but a big part of this, as far as, you know, I've heard in the discussion is using that sanctuary for performance events, at which point in time, we're not drawing from just people in Litchfield. I mean, we're looking at Litchfield becoming a destination. And so I would anticipate that you might have people coming from Peoria, from Phoenix, maybe hopefully Scottsdale, places like that where they might come in off of a major road like Indian School. So I think that the traffic count numbers may be a little bit higher for those, well, I think they'd be significantly higher for those kinds of events than for the regular daily usage for the coffee shop or the nail salon. Have you guys looked at that or considered that?
Well, I mean, it's been a consideration as far as when we expect those uses on the site would be when all the other, when the other, the other businesses would be closed. So, you know, if we're going to have events over the weekend, like right now, again, the church is set up to have Sunday services, right? Well, things aren't going to be open in the mornings for Sunday mornings, so they, so the parking is available and, I mean, with the current situation, it's worked okay to have the three ingress egress points. So I don't think that there's been a major issue or complaints thus far when it's being used in that capacity. But I, if you want more detail, I would, if the traffic engineer could speak to that.
I would just like if you're doing a traffic study for those, that type of scenario, it would be included.
Sure.
I don't know how you do that without having, you know, a live event going on, but I just think that that number might be really different.
Well, and that's part of the request of asking for, you know, aligning with doing this, but asking to have it postponed for, you know, for determined time or I've said trigger on the fourth building, if there's something else that we want to use as the trigger, but let's, let's have a real situation so we can figure out what the data shows.
It was, it used to be, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. It used to be that there was a church there and on Sundays when they came, they parked all the way down Villanueva and up the other side and, you know, we'd love to see people in churches, don't get me wrong, but to me, I would love to know how full the facility was at that point, if there was any way of trying to gauge that, you know? Because if it was 100% full, every seat in the house filled, then we're going to clearly need more space and more, we're going to have more traffic than maybe on a day when the pastor wasn't preaching a really great sermon. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
There might not be as much demand. Yeah, yeah, those are things that might make a difference.
So, kind of piggybacking on what Lisa just said, I mean, I think it's, the numbers you've given us, say 150 total entrances per day, a coffee shop wouldn't survive on that, much less 6,500 square foot of retail, of retail traffic. And there's no way in, that I can't imagine a reasonable person would think that these businesses are going to be operating in a way that one's going to be closed or one's going to be open. A restaurant's going to want to be open at Sunday at lunch and that's when a church is getting out of its services. There's going to be a conflict of traffic and it's already not enough parking if that church is full. There's, everyone that tells stories of that church talks about people that were parking up and down Villanueva and all over the place. So parking is going to be an issue beyond. But there's no way 150 total entrances in this space makes sense. That's 10 an hour. That's including employees, that's including any visits that you have. No business survives on 10 people an hour. It just doesn't happen. So I think that's, that's a number that someone's put in front of us to try and downgrade the thought of the impact of what's going on. That's not a reasonable number to put in front of somebody with any type of business logic. Your traffic engineer mentioned the distances from the point of the beginning of the property line to be able to do a line, I think John and Keith just spoke about that, that's starting from the property line. There would have to be some way to work within, if it needed more space within the other right away, it's there. So I don't think that's a total stop, that it has to start at the property line. I think that would be something that could be looked into. I think it's imperative that we keep traffic out of the residential streets. One of the things that you're asking for is basically, let me get started and we'll do a study. Well, as you said in your frustration and saying that you're not complaining, this has been going on for a year. We've had a year to get these studies done instead of asking for more time to do the studies to give you the approval to do additional studies. So I would say we should have done the studies. I think we're wrong to allow for a parking study after the fact. I would not vote to allow for a parking study after the fact. I think this is enough possible impact to the city itself, that these are questions that need to be done before we allow anything to happen into that. And to allow us to get started and just impact the residents that don't want to be, don't want this project at all and wait to see what we're going to do, I just, I think is a mistake. So I just think it's really important to make note, your city, your traffic engineer said there's going to be 150 total entrances a day. That makes no sense. If you look at other like neighborhood shopping centers, look at the shopping center right there on Indian School where La Bona Pasta is, there's significantly more traffic than 150 traffic or cars going in and out of that site significantly. And that's going to be similar size, probably a little bit larger, probably along the lines of the 10-7 you eventually would like to be, but I can tell you 150 doesn't even begin to open the doors for anyone that's trying to sign a lease. And from your side, you're trying to get people to have viable businesses. So those numbers just don't make sense to me.
May I respond? Again, I'm aligned with you and I'll tell you why, is that these parking or these traffic studies are based off of industry standards. It's what any traffic engineer will utilize specific standards, and I'll let Stephen speak to this, but they go off, they have to go off of data to give an impartial perspective of a site. What I'm asking for is to have real data, have real traffic flows. So it's not a parking demand, it's a traffic study of what is, how many people actually do come in, how many people are going out Villanueva. So we can track that to then put together a solution that is best for the city, best for the site, best for customers, best for tenants. So I think that, I think, I think the characteristic is a little bit unfair, but I, again, but my point is, is I'm aligned with you. I want to have real data of specific traffic.
Can I respond? And I'm all for that, but what you're asking us to do at that point is to be reactionary to a problem or a potential problem instead of being proactive to make sure that the problem does not happen or to mitigate the problem as much as possible before it could happen and affect the residents of the city for potentially years to make a difference and make something happen after the fact. So my mindset and what we do here is to be proactive in thought and not reactionary unless we have to be. So for me, I want to be proactive in the thought process of what we're trying to do with this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, you can quiet, we'll let you speak.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Terry, for giving me such a slight, you're understanding too. It seems the main issue that I keep hearing is the intensity of use. And I'm not, I don't understand what it is we are approving as to possible new building. If we approve this and find out that the intensity of use of existing buildings is too much, are we, have we already approved then this fourth building and it's awkward having the ability to build it no matter what?
Mr. Vice Mayor, the new building he's speaking of would have to go through the building processes as any other building. What he's requesting on that is, is that he, if I'm understanding correctly, is that he would do a traffic study at the time of the new building to see if a right in right out is needed. That's my understanding. But no, sir, there's no new, no new designs, no new plans for a new building, he just wants to add a new building down the road. But no, sir, no new building has been approved by BNZ. Would you agree with that statement, Brian?
Yes, and on top of that, the, we have parameters identified in the planning development or planning, yeah, development overlay that limits any additional restaurant use and the users that could go into that building.
But my question is more, I think there's some kind of percentage of lot coverage restriction on this property. And if he has additional property that is available, do we really have any right to stop him if he shows up with plans to put in this fourth building? Is that even an address that you're considering in here? My concern is the intensity of use. If we find out that this was a bad idea, do we have any ability to keep a big amount of a work site?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe the question you're asking would be addressed in 7F. There's a condition in 7F of the PD, sir, where it says, "Total building square footage on site shall not exceed 26,000 square feet." Does that address your concern, sir?
Yeah, what's there now?
21,000.
21?
Yes, sir. Almost, yeah, almost 22,000. He's saying almost 22, sir. So his new building would be about 4,000 square feet, Brian?
Yeah, the max it could be would be 4,200 square feet. And that was, that was driven by parking demand.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing from everybody is yes, if we do approve this and we find out that it was a mistake because of the intensity of use and there's an application to build under 4,200 feet, we don't have anything to say of it then, does I review it what the pretty picture looks like and how it comes out from the base?
We did put it in here, sir, that a parking, I'm sorry, that a parking study would be required before the first and final phase. That is in section 10. It says the applicant shall prepare a parking demand study prior to the first and prior to the final phase of development. So obviously at the start, but before you could build this new building, he would have to do another parking study to make sure he was going to have to have enough parking and that would have to be approved by the city community development department. That's in section 10, sir.
Then we already come to the conclusion since the parking is separate church that is used, he's probably overparted, pretty under our standards, he's got a parking to help build.
Um...
Yes. Yes.
Can you summarize that?
Vice Mayor, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you saying that there is not enough parking today, sir?
Yeah, I, I mean, when you're talking to church use, there's a mass that needs a parking for a very short period of time, there's always a lot of parking that's put in and the use they're trying to switch to probably under our code, required less parking than what is out there right now. So is it reasonable to believe that we had... So is it reasonable to believe that we have, he has enough parking already to add to the 4,200 feet?
I would tell you, Vice Mayor, in my opinion, he has enough parking today, but there's two catch-22s of that statement. One, this new building we're talking about will eat some of that existing parking that's there today. Also, we don't know the businesses that are going to be there. As, as we said earlier, you know, you know as well as I do, that the number of space is required, there's a lot more space for a restaurant required than there is for a shoe store. So the number of spaces required, we won't really know until we know exactly the businesses that are going, going in there. And we would know that as part of the parking study in section 10. I would say we know enough today, but again, we don't know the businesses or even exactly if they'll be a restaurant or retail. We don't know that yet. So I think preliminary, there's enough, but again, we won't know that until we know the exact business types to put an actual number on it, in my opinion. And that's the reason to require number 10, so we address that concern, sir.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think you bring up a good, a good point, and I don't know if you intended this to be what you were saying or not, but I think what you said was that if we, if we, the council, as I think, as council knows and I know Brian knows, I don't support doing this at all, but if the council decides to go forward and goes forward without the right-in, right-out requirement now, then, and this change in use that the applicant is proposing, if this change in use disrupts the neighborhoods because of the traffic that it generates, we can't do anything about it. The horse is already out of bar. Changes, the change of use has already happened. I think anybody with any, if you just think about it, a right-in, right-out on Indian School is going to lessen the impact of traffic in the neighborhoods no matter what. It might be one car a day, or it might be 150 cars a day, or it might be 300 cars a day, but it will lessen the traffic impact on the neighborhoods. And in terms of what's on Indian School, it's interesting that actually on Indian School on the south side, there is a right-in, right-out at the shopping center that's just down by Osborne for the same reason. Didn't want, they didn't want the traffic to be going into the neighborhoods that are right by that, right by that shopping center, Avenue. So they required a right-in, right-out on Indian School on the south side. Same exact, same exact requirement. So. And just, oh, two, there's just two other comments while I'm, while I have the floor. The, the right-in, right-out concept on Indian School was discussed at the very beginning of this proposal, when you very first brought it in. Right-in, right-out came up in conversations and the problem that was identified is that Litchfield doesn't control that curb cut. We can't require a right-in, right-out because we can't give you authority to cut the curb there and put it in. And, and at that point is when staff started the process with Avondale to get Avondale to agree to a right-in, right-out. So it's not that this is a new, some new concept. The right-in, right-out was identified very early as being a way to keep traffic and minimize traffic on the neighborhoods. And the problem was that we couldn't require it because we couldn't, we could not authorize a curb cut. The answer from Avondale did come literally the day of the council meeting. So it was, it was a late approval by Avondale, but it was one that the city staff did not have any way to control. There have been conversations between our engineering staff, our city staff engineering and Avondale's engineering. And basically, I think you've been told this, you have flexibility in how you design this right-in, right-out. There's flexibility on where you place the right-in, right-out by changing the striping a little bit, by maybe having a very simple median. But what is going to be required is you have to go ahead and do, do the engineering work to design the right-in, right-out so that it works well for this project. They will not give you a theoretical answer, just in the same way that we can't give you a theoretical answer. You have to have your engineers sit down and draw this plan out and put it where you want to have it in the, in your project so that it functions best and have the, and have the striping plans on Indian School and answer all of the engineering questions that have to be answered. That's what your engineer has to do. And you have to take that to Avondale and work with them to get that functioning right-in, right-out if the desire is to minimize impact on neighborhoods. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have another comment?
Uh, thank you. I apologize. My head's buzzing right there. I, I'm still not entirely clear on this extra building that's getting here. It sounds like what I heard is we're agreeing to 26,000 feet. So we are agreeing that fourth building can be built even if we determine that the intensity of use is a problem and we don't want later more intensity. Am I correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor, you are basically correct. Within the way that this has been presented by the applicant and within what the general structure of this, of this planned development overlay, the 4,000-foot extra building fits within all of the restrictions that have been placed on the applicant. So that there's no, there's nothing for the council really to approve. The only limitation is parking study and then maybe something to a design review.
And, and that's part of what I'm proposing, Mayor, that we do a traffic study before we can build that building. And if there's an issue, it has to be resolved on the site to allow for, for the additional building.
The, the problem is, I think, if we're going to, if you're going to, if the council is going to support changing the use, the uses on this project, and if those changes result in negative impacts on our neighborhoods because of the traffic that it generates, you've already done it. The change is already there and the council has no way to require you to put in a right-in, right-out unless you decide you want this other building. If you decide not to do anything with the other building, which maybe that is where you're going to end up, the impacts that you've created have not been mitigated through the use of this right-in, right-out and they can't be mitigated afterwards. It's, that horse is out of the barn. It's already gone. That's the problem with waiting. I think that's what staff has told you is that...
Well, but couldn't there also be another trigger that the city wants? The trick, like, there could be an additional trigger. If, if there is a certain traffic load that is unbearable, then I would still have to do the, the right-in, right-out.
I don't, I don't have any way, I mean, if you say, well, if the traffic becomes unbearable, then I'm going to do this, who chooses, who chooses that it's unbearable?
Well, I mean, I'm relying on traffic engineers and I'd like the traffic engineer to be able to...
The traffic engineer is not the one that has to bear the traffic. The traffic engineer can tell you that there's 150 curves an hour, but is that good or bad? That's not the traffic engineer's job. And what, what those kinds of, you know, that kind of a term in this kind of document will just lead, it will lead to litigation. And then either, either the right-in, right-out is a good way to mitigate impacts on a neighborhood. If it is, then you just need to put it in or it's not.
Yeah, I mean, and what, the, the, talking to a professional in the industry, he is saying it's not. So I, I feel like it's just going off a hunch or going off of, hey, this might lessen traffic by one.
But he's also talking about 150 total ins and outs. We know it's not realistic.
Can we please have him respond to that?
It isn't realistic in what you've already provided to the council in the past. The traffic studies and traffic information you brought to the neighborhoods showed significantly more traffic than that. I don't have those papers in front of me, but I remember listening to the residents and one of the things they were concerned about is that the traffic engineer information that you brought to them showed that the, there was going to be a significant increase in the amount of traffic because of the activity on the parcel. That's one of the very specific things they were, that they were concerned about. And it wasn't just 150 cars over in, you know, a business day. It was a lot more than that.
I would, is if Stephen can please address the traffic studies?
Stephen, are you still with us, sir?
Absolutely. So if, Brian, could you rephrase the question because I was a little choppy on my end, the audience?
Basically, they are questioning the, for lack of a better word, integrity of the data that is put on the studies that you have presented in the three different studies and letters that we've done. Specifically, it was saying that there would only be 150 entries into the site.
Actually, it's less than that, but yes. The methodology that is used for estimating traffic generation for new projects is based on an industry standard from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE. They have a handbook of graphic volumes generated for a variety of land uses that's been collected from existing sites throughout the country, including Arizona.
So what, what uses, what uses are you assuming that when you put all these uses together, the total demand is 150 cars? I think you said 98 out and 40, 48 back out or something, which I don't understand, but it was 150 total uses. Where did you get that from? How many square feet of restaurants? How many restaurants? How many, what kind of restaurant? How many hours of operation?
On page three of our July 8th study, we have that breakdown. The auditorium has 10,357 square feet. The fast casual restaurant, which is not quite a fast food, it's not quite a sit-down, that's where the industry is heading, has a total of 5,000 square feet, 2,300 square feet in the, in the existing buildings and 2,700 square feet in the 4,200 new building. The remainder of the existing buildings was classified as a strip retail plaza, which is a land use that fits a variety of small uses. Nail salons, professional insurance CPAs, a variety of retail functions.
Stephen, you mind if I ask you a question, sir? I, I think looking at your, I'm looking at what you're looking at and I think I understand what the confusion is. So on the chart you're looking at, it shows a net change with project of 750 cars, if I'm reading that right.
On a daily basis.
On a daily basis. The 150 number that we've been talking about was from the, was from the church, correct? Wasn't that on? Um, there's a chart up higher, two pages higher, that shows a church trip total of 162. I think that's where that number comes from. But the actual development number is 750 cars per day. Is that correct, sir?
784 is what the church says.
The 78.
The existing church buildings, which take up the existing 21,000 square feet of the existing buildings, generate approximately 162 trips a day.
So the daily impact from the proposed project is not 150, but rather 784. Is that correct, sir?
Be on a daily basis, the change from the church-only use to the proposed project on a daily basis, the net difference is 750 cars a day.
The net difference from the current to the proposed commercial is 750 cars a day?
Correct.
That's not, that's not the numbers you guys used tonight in your presentation. You had 98 and 40 were the two numbers you had.
Correct. Those are the, the, in the traffic studies, there's a daily traffic number, then there's a morning traffic number, which is at the peak one hour between usually 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and a peak afternoon or PM peak hour, which is traditionally between sometime between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. In our report, based on the traffic generation rates, the morning peak hour is, is a net increase of 48 cars in and out total. 27 in, 21 out. In the afternoon peak, there would be a change of 98 cars total, 51 in and 47 out.
So the difference between the numbers, sir?
That's in one hour.
Sorry, sir.
Correct? That's in one hour, not, not all day long, but one hour.
So the numbers in tonight's presentation were for an hour for a certain period of the day, where the actual number for the whole day is roughly 750. Is that correct?
Just 150 is a daily traffic number.
I'm not seeing the difference here, I'm sorry. I, I thought you said a minute ago, sir, that 750 was the number, the increased number of traffic daily was 750.
On a daily 24-hour total, there's a change of 750 cars increase on a daily basis.
And the numbers that were in the presentation tonight were for a short period, like an hour, three hours, a short period, where the actual number for a 24-hour period is roughly 750, correct?
750 is a 24-hour period number, correct.
So I, I just, I want to ask you, if, in this 750, I think in further back we went through and we found your actual study, it says 784, but we use 750. That's for the, that's for the proposed, the proposal, the way it is today, it's not with the extra 4,000 square feet of building, correct?
That includes the 4,000 square foot, 4,200 square foot building, the new one.
So you... This shows, they chose an auditorium, a fast casual, strip retail and fast casual work. Where is the... There's 10,000. This is, it shows 20,000 square feet.
The, the first three lines in table three basically are the existing buildings' total square footage on the site today. The last two lines there where it says fast casual and 2,700 square feet and a strip retail of 1,500 square feet, that's the 4,200 square foot new building.
Yeah, I don't have that in the chart I'm looking at. So let's, the question I had for you, that, you know, doesn't, it doesn't fit the table that I'm looking at from your, from your design company, but the question is if it's 750, if you have 750 trips in a day, if there's a right-in, right-out on Indian School and half of those people elect to use that right-in, right-out, that would reduce the proposed trip total from 750 by half, so it'd be down to 375, correct?
The math is correct, yes.
Okay, so would you agree that if you reduce the, the trips that are going out into our neighborhoods from 3, from 750 to 375, that you've reduced the congestion in the neighborhood because of that change?
Given the uses and the function of the center, we would estimate that there's more traffic headed to, it's probably 50/50, 50 headed towards to the existing residents' uses in the vicinity and 50% using Indian School.
Right, so that, that 50% will not end up on our vicinity, inside the neighborhood streets because they can get out directly onto Indian School. They can come in off Indian School and they can go out on Indian School.
Well, that's the challenge. When they're trying to exit onto Indian School, they're going to be right at the intersection at this traffic signal and they're not going to be able to continue west on Indian School.
Not, not if you do a good job and design this right-in, right-out and work with the city of Avondale so that it works well. That's where those engineers are concerned.
The challenge with the distances and I heard a comment about the distance starting at the property line, that was a requirement from the city of Avondale. They said that if, if there was a right-in, right-out access, it would need to start 265 feet from the property line. And that's due to the braking distance and other technical calculations of how you design a right turn lane into a right-in, right-out.
Which, if you take, if you take into account the width of Indian School Road and you re-stripe it so that you don't, you don't use the width stripe today, but you, you use that width slightly differently, then you, you understand you can change where the right-in, right-out starts, so you don't, you're not bound by the, by using it back to the property line?
There is same shortage of right-of-way to the east of our site because of the residential walls that are built on the, on the Indian School right-of-way. There isn't a lot of room to add another lane further to the east.
There is room. That's, that's what we, I think we tried to communicate that to Brian. It already has been talked about in general with Avondale, and all Avondale has said is bring us a plan. Bring us something in writing so we can look at it and see if it works.
That brings up a question. If there's a condition that says thou shalt construct the right-in, right-out, what happens if Avondale, after they look at that, they say, "That's not safe, they, and we're not going to permit that"?
The council would have to decide if it's willing to allow that, these additional trips to go in and out of, in and out of the neighborhoods. You'd have to come back.
But the, the issue is with the land uses that are proposed, a lot of traffic, it in general is attracted from residential houses, either coming home or going to this type of use. That's what it's designed for.
That's your assumption.
Well, I agree with that, because I'm saying, I think the same thing. Houses, you know, how many are of your residence? They have to go home.
We don't, but if, again, if, if council makes a decision and allows these changes to happen, and it impacts an neighborhood, there's no way to fix it if we don't put this in now.
That's, that's the point.
I didn't argue that, I just argued last minute, and in my opinion, we've never heard about it, and it just seems, and it's our idea, not Avondale's.
Well, this is, it's impacting our neighborhoods, not Avondale's.
The answer to the question, so this is what I'm not understanding, is someone comes out in Indian School, wants to come in, they're going to turn right and turn right angles. Right?
Potentially, yes.
And if they come out, they're going to turn left.
They're not going to, most times you can't turn left. What happens is because of the loading to that light, you can't safely go left.
Well, I...
Just, I mean, I can just spend a little time down there, you'll see it.
No, I, I've been there, and I think we talked about, talking to Avondale about increasing that light, because right now they don't have a trigger on Indian School. You can sit there for, for two minutes, waiting for it.
It's in the P D. that you couldn't lift, you couldn't make a left exit out of that.
Okay, but I guess what I'm asking is, by coming left here, where are, where are we, where's the impact to the neighborhood?
Because we don't believe you're going to be able to go left, and in the P D. it's, it's, it doesn't allow a left turn out of there because it's not safe with that light and the amount of loading that's already in that intersection already.
So they'd have no choice but to go right?
Based on, like, is there, do we have a study, like, what do we have to?
It backs up there now. Traffic backs up at that red light now to that entrance without there being commercial business there. So naturally, I mean, there will be more backup when there's commercial business there.
So you know how often that's blocked?
No.
So that, that's where, that's where I'm getting to the whole point of...
Well, that, that will be a requirement of your traffic study, though. But I mean, again, it backs up today without commercial business, it's only going to get worse.
But that's like a hunch, that's not even something that we have pure data to...
How, I'm sorry, I have to ask the question, how would it not? If you're adding commercial business right there, that's, that's, if you have one car leaving your commercial business, that's added traffic at that light. So thus, how does, how does business there not increase traffic at that light? How does it not?
I'm sorry, but that's not an argument for why you need to do it. So right now, we're saying that you could turn left and go, "I've done it many times", right? Now, we are saying that this can get backed up, and by doing that, we, we need to work with Avondale to increase that, this intersection to go red. I've taken my kids to school at St. Thomas for three years, and I've sat at that, and it's been red and no cars are going by. And you're sitting here wondering why there's no cars going by. Now, if, if, so we have a trigger, and there's a car here, and there's no cars coming, it's going to stop and allow the traffic to go. Right now, that's not working. And the, and our, and Steven has talked, Steven, can you address that in, in speaking to Avondale?
Yes, I did speak with the traffic signal person at the city of Avondale. They will be checking the signal timing to make sure that it's operating correctly. They have the loops, the triggers, so to speak, that are cut into the asphalt currently. They do tend to malfunction at times, and they are higher maintenance, and that's why you'll see mortar sections with the cameras. This intersection's in the middle of three agencies. Avondale is the lead agency, so I can follow up again with the city of Avondale and see if they found anything. We talked to them last week when this came up, and they were looking into it.
I want to throw a question out there, I'm sorry if this comes off as smart aleck, that's not my intention. You just said the red light today backs up and doesn't work, correct?
I'm sorry?
I was talking to Brian, sir. It's, Brian said a minute ago that the red light today as it is today doesn't work, so thus we want to make it where it's green more often or green longer, correct?
I, I'm stating that it's not efficient.
Okay, all right, so fine, it's inefficient. So what's their today's inefficient, which you want to add 750 cars to it? That right there is the reason for the right-in, right-out.
Matthew, that's also suggesting there's 750 cars turning left. That, that's, I think that's, that's unreasonable.
Okay, but fine. So they're not turning left, that means they're going to go north. If you don't have the right-in, right-out, they're not allowed to go left, they can only go north, then they're on Old Litchfield. That's the argument in itself for the right-in, right-out, is this exact theory. I, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, I apologize.
Can the church traffic paths all to go left right now? Which we always did, at the same time.
They're allowed to go left.
There's no, there's no restriction on today.
Today, that's correct.
Okay, is there, are there any other questions or comments other than what we've already gone through?
Just a quick comment, a quick little question. Do they not have these down there almost every Sunday, what they used to?
Used to.
To...
I don't know.
They didn't have the light there, they didn't have the light there when St. Thomas was there. Didn't have one there there, after St. Thomas was there. Barely.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I just want to, because the purpose for tonight was, the, the prior zoning and general, minor general plan amendment was denied based off of the motion from the Vice Mayor, where he said, the motion was to keep the zoning as is and have the applicant and staff come back with a development agreement to counsel. And the reason we're, we're back is because we were at an impasse with regard to, I think, the two key subjects here, which are the, the traffic impact with regard to a right-in, right-out, and then the concerns with regard to the, the parking with regard to whether or not there's enough parking for the existing buildings to be used as a commercial, as opposed to adding a new fourth building with the additional parking demand that that, that may incur. So I just wanted to say, I think there's, what staff, what we would need direction on is if council is wanting to move forward with being able to try to finalize a P D. and a development agreement, specific direction to, to staff as to the requirements for those two things. I think Vice Mayor Faith's concerns, I think we could probably address those through some, some tweaks to the development agreement in the P D. where, for example, that the, the uses have to comply with the city's current parking standard requirements. So for example, if, if you have three, three buildings now, and you put in a restaurant, and that eats up all of your parking requirement, then you wouldn't be able to put in a fourth building because you don't have enough parking. The same thing, we could word it to where also where, you know, for example, if, if using two and a half of the current buildings based off of the use, like Matthew said, a restaurant would have a higher parking demand than a shoe store. If you were to put in two small restaurants and you still had available space, but those two small restaurants ate up your entire parking demand, then you wouldn't be approved to be able to use that additional existing space because you don't have sufficient parking. So we could, we could try to work with the, the parking issues. I think we could try to address those through, through some additional language to, I think the key would be is, there would either need to be a requirement for a right-in, right-out or no requirement for a right-in, right-out. The concern I would have with, with having a, a right-in, right-out requirement for a condition of the fourth building is, as Vice Mayor Faith said, what if the existing use currently consumes the current 148 parking spaces and they don't build a fourth building, then you would never get to a right-in, right-out? And it would be very difficult to say, and have a metric, say, I'll let you talk in a second, but to say, for example, if, if we established a metric and said, X number of trips through the subdivision in a, in a day would trigger a right-in, right-out, what mechanism would the city have to be able to require the developer to go in and do that after the fact? Would likely just end up in, in litigation or claim issue because now, you know, if we say, okay, this, this metric has been triggered, developer, you're required to do that, and the developer says, "No, I'm, I'm not going to do it, financially I can't do it". What, what do we have to enforce that requirement? Is, it would be a concern.
I think it's, I think it's clear between what you had to say and what, and what city, the city manager said, it's, it's the staff's recommendation that if this is going to go forward, it goes forward with all of the conditions that are in the, the P D. That is, as, as has been explained in our packets and discussed tonight, including the right-in, right-out. So, Mr. What I'm going to do is call, call, is there, is there a motion?
I just like to address...
You've got something brand new to offer, yes, but otherwise we're going to get a decision made on this motion.
I understand, I want to address the, the parking demand, and because on the site plan, the parking requirements were driven based off of what is on this site. So this site plan has enough parking for this 4,200 square feet, and for the uses of having a certain percentage be restaurant use, a certain percentage be the church, and a certain percentage be the, so that's all driven based off of the city of park, the Litchfield Park's requirements on parking. So that's how this, this is how, that's how the final 4,200 square foot building came to that size, is based off of what is allowable for parking.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I accept that, and in that, I'm sure it's all true. Part of the issue of parking is not really the issue that we have in terms of if this goes forward or not. The issue is whether council is going to agree to staff and support what staff is telling us, you need a right-in, right-out, or not. And that's, I think that's what we need to go and get signed with. We've spent two hours on this and had planned to spend an hour. So we're going to move forward and council can make a decision on it. So is it, is there a motion to direct staff to prepare a P D. and a, and a supporting development agreement with terms and conditions as recommended by staff and the reports they've given us tonight in our packet and here in this meeting? Present it to the applicant, and it will go forward between staff and the applicant if the applicant agrees to staff's positions. Is there a motion for that? Page is our second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, do you understand there's been a motion made? I'm not sure if you're with us or not with us.
And the, the motion basically is to instruct staff to continue negotiating?
No, not, no more negotiating, the, to go ahead and prepare a P D. and a development agreement so long as the applicant agrees with what staff does recommend.
I, okay, I thought we already established they don't agree.
Well, we're given it, it's going to be, if, if they don't agree, it's going to be, we'll move forward then.
Okay, so, so the motion is to instruct staff in a development?
What? Say it again.
The motion is to instruct staff to put together a development agreement according with these eight terms they have there?
Correct, so long as the applicant agrees. Okay, so the question's, the question's been called, and so we can, we're going to go on the motion as it stands, which is to direct staff to, to draft a development agreement and P D. with terms and conditions as presented to us tonight, so long as the applicant is in agreement with those terms, terms and conditions. So it's not, it's not directing staff to negotiate, it's directing staff to prepare the agreement and consistent with what we've been given, if the applicant agrees. That's moved and seconded. So now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I would say it moves forward, if, if the motion passes five or two, so, but you had your instructions from council. That completes the business, I think, on this agenda. Is there a motion to... Your son? All those in favor, please say aye. All right, any opposed? Mr. Vice Mayor, are you, are you, don't you got papers or what?
No, no, that's not me, I don't think. I actually had your mute, and you put back on mute.
All right. Thank you, the opposed. This, this meeting is adjourned. We're going to continue now with our regular council meeting. Does anyone wish to have a small short break?
Sorry to interrupt you, sir. Mr. Mayor, the city attorney would request a five-minute break, sir.
Five-minute break, okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm going to get the traffic guy because he's exactly...
Okay, any other reports that council is compelled to give us?
He didn't want to hear that.
Next month, okay, save it for next month. City Manager, do you have a report that you're compelled to give us, realizing that you send us a report every week?
I don't think so.
Okay, good idea. Now we have a response, response to last meeting, call the community, there were no requests to speak, so there's no response. This is the this meeting, call the community, I don't have any filled out with forms, so there's no request to speak. So now we'll go to presentations. First presentation is the fiscal 22 audit report. Our auditor has been sitting here patiently for two and a half hours, and glad your report is finished.
The report is finished. I actually enjoyed listening, it's fun to listen to a government board, and I appreciate the time and, and the detail of making these decisions that are so important to make sure that the city is developing a fair and modern future. My name is Steve Palmer, I'm a C P A. with Intendverted C P As and Advisors. The city is contracted with us to conduct our annual audit, so I'm here to present to you the results of the audit that was recently completed for fiscal year 2022. So this would cover the time period from July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Is that better?
Okay. Next slide, Paige. The first thing I'd like to mention is that each year, the city completes an annual comprehensive financial report, and they send that to the G F O A, the Government Finance Officer Association, for their review and scrutiny. Based on the results of their review of the financial statements, if it, if it meets their criteria, they issue this certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is quite prestigious, and the city has received this for I don't know how many years running, but I just wanted to, to point that out and congratulate Paige and the city staff for achieving this award. It's, it's included with the city's annual financial award, and it's really an honor to receive that report.
to receive that report. Next page. So I'm sure what's burning in your minds, are you wanting to know if the city passed their audit? And the short answer to that is yes. After we go through and re, we review the underlying documentation, tie that back to the city's accounting records, and then review those records and how they're presented in the financial statements, after we perform all that work to our satisfaction, we issue our independent auditor's report. It's in, it's within this report that we express our opinion on the financial statements. And we issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, meaning that after we've completed all of our work, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the city's financial position and the results of its operations from year-end issue 30, 2022. And that's the first most, most significant report. We issue another report of the city's internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And here is where we address items that we may become aware of, weaknesses in internal controls, for example, exceptions in the audit, and I am very pleased to report that we have no findings to report, to report here. Third report that we issue is on state, state legal compliance. There are very specific criteria that we're asked to look at. The one you're probably most familiar with is compliance with HERF funds, highway user revenue funds. So we look at those types of things, those types of revenues that are restricted for specific use, and we give an opinion on whether or not those items aren't conforming to state law from a financial perspective. And I am pleased to report that we issued an unmodified reporting on that as well. Let's take just a, a brief look at the city's finances. This will be from the ten-thousand-foot level, if you will. So the city's equity or total net position at the end of the year was about forty-three million dollars. So if we were to take all the city's assets, this would be cash, cars, everything, all the assets subtract the liabilities, that residual amount is the equity, that was about forty-three million. And over time, whether or not this number increases or decreases, it's a good indication as to whether or not the city's financial health is improving or deteriorating. So for the year ended, June 30, 2022, the city's net position increased by six point three million, very positive. Let's look a little bit about the, the capital asset activity. Capital assets increased by nine point two million dollars this past year. This was the result of about ten million dollars in additions and a very small amount of disposals, you know, old obsolete equipment alike. The city also reported one point one million dollars of depreciation expense. Some of the more significant additions, as you're well aware, the construction in progress on the city center project, that was by far the largest addition. There were also some projects involving the perimeter wall, storm drain, and some others, as well as some street and sidewalk projects. If we look at the debt of the city, it was just under twenty-three million at the end of the year, and this provides a breakdown of, of what makes up that twenty-three million dollars. You can see the largest component is bonds payable, we're just under twenty million. The city issued about fifteen million dollars, just under fifteen million for the new project, and they also refinanced the Series 2015 bonds for a more favorable interest rate. So that resulted in a combined debt issuance of seventeen million. I think it's also important to note that the city's net pension and its OPEB liability decreased by almost a million dollars in June 30, 2022. There's a lot of factors that go into this liability. It's the makeup of the city's workforce, market conditions, et cetera. There are a lot of factors that the city has no control over, but the Arizona State Retirement System has actuaries that make calculations as to the contributions we need to make each year to meet the liability when your employees retire. And so long as the city continues to meet these obligations, and I'm sure you will, resources should be available to be able to mention obligations. Next slide. I think it's really important to look at things in a, in a historical context. So this is a five-year trend for the general fund. That top line represents the assets of the general fund, the bottom line is the liabilities, and that line largely mirrors the assets, just below the assets, that's the fund equity. You can see over the past five years, the assets and equity in the fund have increased substantially, very positive trend, while the liabilities have been pretty much flat. And here's the cash in the general fund. Over the past five years, it's increased from three million to just under eighteen million. And here's the revenue expenditure trend in the general fund. You can see it's been pretty stable over the past five years with a pretty big increase in 2022 as, as the, I think, I remember, I thought it was mainly due to tax revenues, increased retail sales and the like, and increased tax revenues. It's also important to note that in fiscal year 2022, the general fund transferred just a little over four million dollars to other funds. I think one point six million went to the capital projects fund, seven hundred and somewhat thousand went to the debt service fund. So included in the expenditures in the general fund are these expenditures to other funds to meet their needs as well.
All right. Next item is public safety reports. Victor, bring the foreman.
Eric, council, city staff, I have a lot of complaints, uh, in November and December, since we weren't here last month. So starting with November, we had a total of sixty-nine calls for the city. That's a fourteen percent decrease from last year, 2021, November, eighty-seven, eighty-seven percent of them is going to be EMS. We only had one fire in November, it was a small vehicle fire, put out by a single inch response. Billable calls, we only had one cardiac arrest within the city, about five of those, a handful of ALS, and I think it was a car accident with injuries, and then a majority of the Hacienda and local Lenda calls. I think we had sixteen Hacienda with half of those being falls, eleven of those being transports. I know already EMS division has been reaching out to the safer living facilities, trying to educate them on some of the falls, which I noticed across the local Lendas, both December and November, we had a letter call, only one of those falls, but we still have plenty of transport, so they are high-risk communities, we still have lots of medical, other call of those, those facilities. We also have a couple of false alarms, most of them, one of them being at school and a couple of residential, and forty-five occupancy inspections for the month of November. December was also a decrease, there was sixty-three call with a decrease of twenty-three percent compared to December 2021, no fires, and then ninety percent of those calls were EMS. We did have three cardiac arrests for the month of December. Hacienda was about fifteen calls, with six of those being falls, all fifteen of those were transports for us. Local Lenda was, was low again to eleven calls, only two of those were falls, so trending in the right direction, hopefully, those facilities. They said no fires, besides the couple of false alarms, and then they had eighteen occupancy inspections for the month of December. We did have one permanent inspection for December, we reached out to our building, still reached, trying to figure out the specifics of it, but the most we could figure out is it was one of the commercial occupancies for the radio to report their alarm systems, so that's why they would have that event. That's, thank you. That's just my report.
Questions from council?
I have a quick one and a comment. I'm wondering, do you all ever follow up with the ones you transport, patients you transport, particularly from the care centers? Do you follow up to see whether or not they actually then admitted, or are they sent home? I think that would be an interesting statistic to try and get a look at.
Yeah, one, one of our, our tabs on our EMS department report, when we, when we make contact with them and all that, we, we do ask if they've been in the hospital for the last thirty days, and then if they were admitted or not admitted, or that fires, we try to do that front end, so we don't have that follow-up. I was wondering if I could follow up with the EMS divisions on the backside of that.
And in the follow-up to that, we just to share a quick experience, my mother-in-law's in a, in a care center, but not one of the ones you serve, or we in our community, and she recently was admitted again to the hospital, and in the, looking at the situation, everybody's asking her direct questions like, are you having chest pain? Are you having this, are you having that? And every time you suggest it to her, why yes, I am, why yes, I am. And so my thought was, I wonder if open-ended questions are used much, or how are you feeling versus do you have chest pain? Give her a totally different response.
Yes, sometimes there are leading questions that, I think that's probably kind of what experiences as paramedics, and feel, so you, obviously, we do have to allow some of the the pertinentives to make sure that we're not over, you know, missing, missing something like that, so, yeah, I think that, that is something that we, we work on with our paramedic training and questioning patient history, but sometimes we, we work on risk reward and, and the ability to, if we miss something, so if we miss the possibility of chest pain and not addressing that, the, the risk is much greater than if somebody actually was talking to them, talking with them, we don't try to lead them down that route, but.
What I found was interesting is the care center asked her if she was having chest pains, and she wasn't, she had a cough, but, so they called 911, they said it's an automatic 911 if you say yes to that answer. And then the paramedics who responded asked her if she was having chest pains, and she said yes. And then again, it was an automatic transport to the hospital because of that, and so, and end up, she was just having a cough.
And a cough, yeah, we have the white coat syndrome, so a lot of times we spend half an hour with a patient, and they say nothing of the sort, and we rule that out, and then they get in front of a doctor, they say, you have chest pain? Well, I do, radiating out a left arm, and the doctor looks at us, didn't give a match for him, so, it tells that.
I would assume to tell you how to do your job, so, thank you for.
No, no, all of that was very good supervision, I had to see if there's someone, they can track that and come back in. Thanks for that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, and your guys do.
Thank you.
Avenue Police Department.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, I apologize, I don't have the complete stats for November, that will not exist. I do have a few of the stats that we had, so the month of November, we had a total of two hundred and nine calls for service. It was a relatively fly month for November. We did have nineteen traffic stops, and we also had nine, I apologize, three flock alerts, it was kind of a quiet lunch for the flock system. Out of those flock alerts, we did have one contact that we were able to identify a vehicle. The month of December, excuse me, we had two hundred and twenty-four calls for service. We had thirty, we increased our school zone details up to thirty-nine compared to fourteen for the last month, so we have increased the presence of our school zone details during that time. The, we have also increased our traffic stops from nineteen, previous month, we increased it up to thirty-nine, we started in the course and traffic along all this road, but they're out of bounds quite a bit, especially as the end of constructions come forward, and trying to remind people to slow down and buy by the speed limit. We issued thirteen traffic citations and twenty-six, uh, or warnings. December, we also had nine flock alerts, put out all the cameras in the city, and we were able to locate four of the, four of those flock alerts that identified and located throughout various parts of the city, some of whom were stolen vehicles or stolen license plates, or some of them were stolen license plates that were a crashed vehicle, and the owner didn't know that someone put a plate on their car, and they swapped them out. So we had that, we had a couple, we had a stolen golf cart that was relocated by one of our officers that was stolen from the golf, from Palm Valley Golf Club, that was located down the road. Our officer had contacted the Digger Police Department, golf cart was stolen, became a responder, took that golf cart from, from us, so we were able to identify a lead for that, that's on the Digger's computer here, so I'm not sure if we're down with that case, but I know that we found a hard one, I think it'll shortly. One thing I wanted to talk about a little bit today, and it happened, it's actually occurred during the month of January, is we've had several incidents up at the Loma Homestead recently up here. We've had three incidents in the last month of January over there. Most recently, we had two incidents on the 15th, this past weekend up there, trespassing and vandalism. On the 15th, one of our officers was doing routine patrol up there, due to the increase of presence, and she, she located her vehicle up in the area and then requested backup, another officer showed up, and they were able to catch five juvenile males up there who had vandalized and trespassed on that property. So we identified those four males and then, or I'm sorry, those five males that were from the 15th incident. We're working on that case, file charges with the Hubert County Attorney's Office, gathering the total value to city management on, with the call and his help from, so we can see how much the whole total damage is to that incident charge, is there any kind of Hubert force on those individuals. The incident that happened on the 14th, we were able to identify, through some officer's investigation, two other individuals that were separate from these kids that committed the criminal damage and trespassing in the 84, completely unarried, they don't know each other, they just see this abandoned building that they, that's up there, and they think it's, uh, some of them did damage. So we identified those suspects, we're also finishing up that case, this is a charge on them also with damage. I'll jump back to the 11th, where we had another incident up there, and as of yesterday, we were able to identify two other suspects, all juvenile males who were up there trespassing and committing criminal damage up there, so it is a high point of interest for the city and the police department, and we frequently monitor that area and make sure that we can be up there the best we can. We have cameras up there, we have signs, so we're doing the best we can to get up there and deter anybody from entering that homestead, so it's a work in progress, we don't want it to go too late, so we're very diligent on that, so that is all I have for your folks.
Just a quick question, so in two of those incidents, the cameras worked, correct? That's how you found the, two, two of those man was, or no?
Uh, yes, part of them was the foxes, we, we viewed some of the videos of the foxes and catching a vehicle go up there. The most recent one was an officer was doing routine patrol, kids were still up there, and we found them, and the other two, yes, were from the foxes that helped us identify who they are.
I know the historical society group is very happy to hear that at least the cameras are working as well as you guys obviously.
Yes, sir.
What should we do, cameras and alarms? You do all?
There's, there's cameras clearly in the house, there's not a motion to the current personnel, sir. But there are, there's cameras in the thingset. I don't, I don't want to say you motion investigation, I'm going to stop.
Oh, but why, why would we not have, you know, a, a alarm system that had an actual physical alarm, and without, here? So if somebody's up there breaking into the place, the alarm goes off.
Scary.
Well, and, and call, I mean, that, it would be both.
Which is the.
I thought we had that, the flux system.
I feel like we had this discussion a couple of years ago, we can sit down, I thought we had, I don't remember why, but we've had this discussion before.
Maybe, maybe this is something you can take back and figure it out, we'll have another discussion.
Exactly. Um, the group home on Cascada, any updates on that?
Yes, we were out there Tuesday, I believe, and the information that I heard, those residents were moving out. We're working back and forth with city code enforcement to provide a legal paperwork that, there have, that adhere to certain rules and stuff like that. I haven't heard of it yet with the city code enforcement, so.
Thank you.
We're monitoring that closely.
Thank you.
Back to my house, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the solutions to this problem looking at is if they start the society, which gets better than the program. Maybe you could, maybe you could get us, maybe you could suggest that to us. Well, can you get an update on that?
Yes. If you want right now or.
No, if it's somewhere in the, in general, so, but we can sort of put it out in the general, yeah. Thanks a lot.
Can I just?
What was that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank your officers for their diligent work for us, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, next item is staff reports. We have a finance monthly report. Is it different from the report we just heard?
This month I have a report through December of this fiscal year, if you want a quick update, if you read the.
Quick update would be nice, something of that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'll do the quick version.
Not like, not like a really long.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This report is through December of 2022, so halfway through the fiscal year. Our sales tax December this year, this year over December last year is down twenty-one percent. However, last year we had a significant audit payment of three hundred and twenty thousand, so had we not received that one-time payment, we would have been eleven percent higher. So our retail, restaurants, online are all higher than they were last year. So our retail, restaurants, online are all um higher than they were last year. Year-to-date, um, sales tax is up six percent. Um, construction sales tax is up four percent for the month and down twenty-four percent for the year, but we're at about sixty percent of budget. So. All I have is sales tax and to the full report, the thumbnail version. Overall, our revenues are just under six point seven million or at fifty-one percent of budget. Um, our general fund expenses are at four point nine million or forty-one percent of budget. Our construction sales tax is six hundred thousand or fifty-seven percent of budget. And so far, we've spent six hundred and forty-two thousand on capital projects, including a hundred and ninety-two thousand for the patrol cars. The Litchfield Square expenses are reported separately. So this gives us a general fund, any fund balance of twenty-two point eight million. Um, the detail for rec and special events is in the packet. I won't go through that. Our HERF revenue is at almost two hundred and forty-nine thousand or only forty-six percent of budget. So we are um coming in short there. We have spent four hundred and seventy-seven thousand on HERF projects, which leaves us an any balance of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, Litchfield Square through the end of December invoices paid is nearly four million. However, we have committed all of the bond money of one point five million of general fund expenses. Those bills just haven't hit yet, but all of that money has been committed. So any future Litchfield Square costs will be, will come to council for approval. Um, which takes us to our total fund balance of twenty-two point eight million in the general fund with nearly seventeen million of that um in unassigned fund balance. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions to the council? Thank you for an excellent report. All right. Takes us to the crane boom update. Is the plant, is the boom changed? No. Okay. Thank you.
I did want to report home and receive the well numbers. Uh, so the well site is producing or generating a point one nine parts per million of the T C E, which is almost unmeasurable at this point. So every year and every five years, we get a huge decrease. So every.
Which well is that? Is that the lake well?
The only, the only one with the city on the number is.
For the lake?
Yeah. So good news there.
I thought, I didn't think I had the encapsulation T C E in that lake, in a lake well.
Well, this is kind of our well. And so previously, uh, the well had produced up to one. It starts getting dangerous at five. So we've never been in any kind of a danger zone. And I'm looking back in the nineteen nineties and two thousands, it got close to one, one and a half.
Now it's one point nine.
And now it's point one nine.
Well, point one nine.
Point.
Right. That's fine. All right. Any questions? No questions. All right. We'll, 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 capital improvement projects. You can stand up there.
I'll give you a thumbnail of this as well. Vista Verde drainage approval project is uh complete. It's a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar project in which this flood control district actually reimburses for seventy-five percent of that. We have invoiced for half of that, or a hundred and seventy thousand. We're talking generating the second invoice for that now of a complete. Uh, the minor cleanup items and a little bit of grass, some bonding that they're going to take care of with some uh catch bases and complications.
How did it work at this last rate?
Big puddle.
The, there's a, there's a puddle near the valley gutter that's about four inches. And it's because it's so flat, the, the swell that was designed is less than a half percent. It's really hard to construct something at that percentage. So the contractor has a solution. We're going to connect um small drainage catch basin to a pipe they put in the ground and then we'll bleed it off. But the major flows is coming from animals.
So no condos care watching that all.
Uh, for the, the second capital uh project, the pavement replacement, which also involves the Vista Verde Circle, there was uh about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of pavement replacement, which included the Vista Verde Circles and La Casa. Uh, that project is about ninety-nine percent complete. It's under striking. So they have branded pavement in those areas. Upcoming C I P, Stax Parkamot, we're currently finalizing contract language with the contractor. Just had some delays because their, their strength pretty thin with uh labor and getting their hands on asphalt scheduling. That project should start here, not February. That's a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar parkamot project. That started in the school roof reconstruction project. We're pre-final plans. Uh, it's about a six hundred. Uh, we had budgeted uh about a million dollars of HERF uh revenue to be used for that improvements. And that project starts sometime in the late, late spring or early summer, but in this fiscal year, trying to get it completed before the fiscal year. And then we're currently working on a fiscal year twenty-three pavement management plan, which will involve about seventy-five streets. And we're going to spend six hundred, about six hundred thousand dollars to do pavement renovation.
What are your questions?
I'll tell you what, the paving crew or company that did uh, did.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. Well, man, exaggeration.
And they're going to be in Stax Parkamot.
Okay. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
That brings us to our consent agenda. We have items nine A through J. Does a member of the council wish to take any of these items off for further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, a question about the consent agenda?
Yes, just one question.
Sure.
Just there's an item on there B that, that already occurred like two weeks ago.
Did that, and I'm just asking for education purposes.
Which one?
So the ratification of street closure.
Yeah, that hap, that already happened.
Also, James, I don't have the authority to sort of close the street, but the project needs to get done. Also, we bring back for ratification.
So yes.
It rarely happens.
You're trying, city manager, try to stay with this, this about, this is okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, one quick thing, sir. I don't, I don't know that you meant to, sir, but we skipped over the special projects update.
Okay. Well, you know, I didn't, I didn't mean to skip over it. So as soon as we finish the consent agenda, let, let us, we're going to finish consent and then we're going to go to it. So is there any, is there any item on the consent agenda, nine A through J, that any council members can pick out? Okay. Is there a motion to announce the consent agenda? All those who favor us, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody? All right. Consent agenda is about, now we're going to have more time now for special project update.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a quick update on Litchfield Square. And then I'll also talk about Storm Rain a little bit. Um, so on January night, uh, preliminary walkthrough on Litchfield Road. It's basically complete. It's not a very big part of the work at this time. We have our final walkthrough tomorrow. And then the plan, assuming everything, go for all the plans to open it to traffic, pull down barricades, open it to traffic on Monday, twenty-third. Uh, Village Parkway is still under construction. It's paved now with first lip of asphalt. Sidewalks and the paper on Village Parkway are being installed as we speak on tonight, but we're not letting go of them. Uh, landscaping on Village Parkway is also underway. As, as you know, D M P four, uh, for Litchfield Square involves relocation of the airline canal. That work is underway. The dryup for that to allow both ends to be connected to the existing airline. And now it's scheduled for January thirtieth. Hopefully it won't last three weeks, but they have it scheduled for three weeks. Hopefully it'll be a lot shorter than that.
Are you going to have to use a bypass pump or are you just going to be using a dryup?
Yeah, we, uh, no bypass pumping. We have arranged to hook to a fire hydrant. And have that ready to go into the system should that be necessary. And they're happy with that. Um, the work on Honeysuckle Street is completed. Uh, our, we ended up with some pretty rough pavement. And um, not knowing when, we'll actually rebuild that street. I talked to Matthew. We're going to look into putting some temporary pavement down there to make a little nicer to drive along and walk on. All of the electrical facilities in Litchfield Square have now been completed and they're all pentradged. So don't stick your hand in any of the transformers out there. Uh, we're currently working with Aiken Gardner and G M P five. Hopefully they'll bring that to the council pretty soon. We're looking at development around the initial goal of the park and some streets, street improvements around the park. So we'll bring that forward. Uh, also, um, the Storm Rain project is now under construction. That's on the government for a few weeks. And Fairway Drive, um, when that's finished, Aiken Gardner will go over to the old street, the old avenue. And then finally, I'll hold Litchfield Road. Um, we have the oldest road, or the most part until mid-April. Uh, we got our first stakeholder meeting with businesses, pretty long, it's on. Got a lot of input from those, from those folks. Have taken that input and we'll come back to them in another stakeholder, second stakeholder meeting before construction. And make sure we've got all of their concerns and requests. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Woody, uh, Aiken Gardner, can you just kind of, how, how they made the work of?
Excellent. Good.
Okay. Now we're going to our normal business uh agenda. Item ten A is setting our regular council meeting schedule. Currently, the meetings are the third Wednesday of each month. However, everyone has requested we keep the first Wednesday of each month free in case we need to have a special meeting. So we have, we have a night when we can generally get four if we need it. The question is whether we're going to stay with our current scheduling, that third Wednesday, or if somebody wants to suggest a change. Otherwise, I'd like to have a motion to maintain the third Wednesday of each month at seven P M as our regular scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting with a request to council members that they understand that we may have special meetings on the first Wednesday of the week. Are there special meetings or studies? Any further discussion? All those who favor us, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have a schedule. We know when we're going to meet. Next is a temporary construction easement with Wigwam Joint Venture L P.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, this item is for the city to receive temporary construction easements along the east side of Old Litchfield Road. So that we can build two catch basins and do some paving work at the drop off at the spot location there. The, during the design, we discovered that the right of way line is relatively close to the back of the curb. So you can imagine that the palm trees and the sidewalk are actually on way long property. The curb is in the right of way. But if you move just a few feet on the back of curb, you're on that property. So we need to have these temporary construction easements because the catch basins will um be within the right of way. But we're going to disturb the area of morale, the catch basins will only go, and that will go into their property. Um, so we asked Wigwam to work with us on this and they did. Um, we have negotiated the agreement that is attached in your packet. And I've been told today that they're in the process, Wigwam is in the process of signing this agreement. And we'll have it in the next years.
Any questions? Just a, a comment, I guess, that it looks like there's a paragraph in here in, in this uh council communication that actually applies to the, the trench that's going in under, over the underpass. It goes into that trench.
Yes. Um, so one, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. One of the temporary construction easements that we need is for a trench drain that Wigwam installs as part of the Storm Rain project on the west side of Litchfield Road, right there at the entrance to the underpass. And the reason we need to do that is because uh you're installing a pump station on the east side of the underpass. The floor of the underpass actually slopes back to the west by a few inches. So we had the choice of either taking that floor out and replacing it so it slopes back to the east. But then we still have to do something with trench and that also. And, or maybe putting a pipe in that area. So I came up with the idea of a trench drain, which I've used for many years, and retention basins, and they work very well. In this case, you cover it with fabric, uh, and then D G so that the water can get into the trench drain. But the, the salt and everything gets caught in D G eventually. Kind of have to go in there, pull back in, maybe a few years, five years, pull back the D G, replace that filter valve. Let it disqualify. But that's a much more cost-effective way of dealing with that last few inches of water that will remain on the west side of the underpass. Because it can't make it over the home to get to the crossroads.
The city's going to pay for that T C E, right?
No, we're writing it.
But for, for how long, for as long as considering?
For the period of the construction.
And we're not going to put anything in the permit because there's always a problem with water.
No, permit easement is um, I don't know where I signed it.
All right.
This is just a temporary construction easement. I'm sorry. Wigwam required that the temporary construction easements agreement would be separate from a permanent easement.
All right. Any questions about these temporary construction easements? If those are a motion to approve an agreement with Wigwam Joint Venture L P for the temporary construction easements as described in your packet. Any, any further discussion? All those who favor us, say aye.
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 All right. Item B passes. Item C. Authorizing adjustments to the existing easements related to relocation of the Aironic Canal.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this has to do with, as I mentioned earlier, relocation of the Aironic Canal geared out of the way of Litchfield Square, uh, future construction, one of which is the uh parkamot that the developer, Mike Hurst, will be installing when he builds his buildings. The other is geared out of the way of future development on the, possibly a parking garage on the Scott log site. So we're moving, we're, we're abandoning a portion of the canal. And in a pipe, we're moving the canal up to Fairway Drive, across Fairway Drive and back down to the canal. Um, so we need to, there are existing easements for this canal. So we need to modify those easements. We will be, since we own the property, we'll be awarding two easements to the Wigwam owners for the north-south portion of the pipe. The east-west portion is in the right of way, so there's no need for an easement. Uh, that's one thing. Uh, the second thing is that we want to abandon, when we remove the portion of the canal that's in the way, we want to abandon that easement. Get rid of it. And the third thing is um Wigwam has, is aware that their canal is not entirely located within the easement. They have asked us to clean up, if you will, the easement for the remaining portion of the canal that's going to stay in place from where Scott log is or to the field road. Those, those three things are what we're asking the mayor and council to authorize tonight.
So when you say clean up the easement for the canal, that means the canal is located on none of that property, not, not within the easement?
A portion of it. About a third of it is located outside of the easement.
And, and how, and how have they reacted when we've asked them to do the same thing for us?
I'm sorry, I'm understanding.
We've asked them to move the easement because we have something that's uh, that, that is touching there. Like, for example, the sidewalk area around the circle as an example. But there's other examples where we've had to get in the movies or give us an easement. I don't recall, I don't recall them being real cooperative in doing that.
This was an inducement to get them to approve the relocation of the canal in our place. This was an inducement to get them to approve the relocation of the canal in our place.
Uh, I, I, I will, I will, I will support it, but I want you to communicate with them that I'm not pleased with them at all because of their, their, the fact that they have not been willing to work with us as reasonable, as reasonable partners in any of this other stuff. At all.
I understand, I'll pass on to them.
You could shut their, shut their canal down if they had to, which we obviously don't want to do because you don't want to shut down the red course, but.
Where you can fill the water. You put the water in the tunnel or.
All the gifts to the people.
You're in the north side.
Is it really dirty? Do they want us to clean it?
No, no, no.
It's leaking out.
They have the right to have the canal or they have it. They have it on our property. And so now they're saying, well, we want you to give us an easement on your property, so our canal is good.
They want to put goldfish in it?
We're cleaning up an easement issue, not that for water.
Oh.
Is, is there a motion to adopt resolution 23 dash 539 to adjust the existing easements related to the relocation of the airline canal? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Strictly.
What?
Strictly.
Strictly, that's right. No fish, no fish in that.
Strictly adopt.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, so they have their easement. Or have they? Cart path trench, permanent easement.
Okay, uh, this is, I mentioned this as part of the trench terrain, um, the west side of Litchfield Road. Um, you already approved the temporary construction easement, so we can go out and build it. Once it's built, we need to have a permanent easement so that we can get in there, house people, and get in there and work on the trench terrain, and that's a sort of cleanup and so on. Um, so again, we worked with Woodlong, Woodlong's that property, to, um, agreed to give us this permanent easement. And they have agreed to do so. Um, I'm not sure, I, I think this is also the one that's currently being signed, I'm not so certain on that. But, um, they have not objected, um, once we worked out through, you know, some of the issues that they have with easement.
They're very nice, sir. Look at it. That went to one minute.
Uh, you, you have to realize, we are solving a huge problem for them. They have to pump that canal every time there's a big rain, and now we're spending the money to fix it. And, and they're just being nice to us, sell us to fix it, so I feel really good about it. Is, is there a motion to approve a permanent easement agreement with Woodlong Joint Venture LP for the trench drain on the west side of the Litchfield Road, cart path, underpass? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Nicely.
Any opposed? Nicely. Let them know we did it nicely.
Nicely slapped their hand.
Okay, next item is item 10E, introduction of ordinance 23 dash 265, engine braking. Mr. Williams.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mayor Johnson, this is the first reading of the engine braking ordinance. For those of you that were at the truck meeting, um, back for Christmas, you may remember there was a discussion about this, that we have them jake braking ordinance. Some people call it engine braking ordinance, some people call it jake braking. And actually, a representative from the Trucking Association said, why don't you have an ordinance to do this? We are. So we base this off other cities. It's pretty short and simple, no jake braking in the city, obviously unless there was an emergency, then they could. So we're a pretty flat city, honestly, I can imagine there's not much jake braking going on anyway. But now there'll be an ordinance in the books, and most cities already have this. So this, once this goes through the process, of course, there could be no jake braking in the city.
There, there were a lot of comments at the, at the public meeting about jake brakes. A lot of comments, which was really surprising. Because there is no reason to be using a jake brake on a canal that. Any of that? Yeah, that's amazing. Okay, is there, uh, is there a motion to introduce ordinance 23 dash 265 to amend city code to add a new subsection on engine braking? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is introduced. Next item is a memorandum of understanding with Catclaw, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Mayor, council, we recommend a table as a side of the fed board seat.
All right. Then is there a motion to table the memorandum of understanding with Catclaw? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is Litchfield Road roundabout traffic devices. We may want to have an executive session on this, is that correct?
How would you be, sir?
Okay. Is there a motion to go to executive session, discuss item 10G and obtain, um, advice of council on, on item 10G?
Could we ask you that to do the end of the agenda?
It is the end.
I'm sorry.
It's the last item.
If we can have just a, a motion to do all executive sessions at the same time, we can do that, so we don't have to go back.
Is there another executive session?
There is another executive session with regard to, uh, charter city, um, one issue.
Okay, so is there a motion to go to executive session on two different issues? Item 10G and also charter city to obtain advice of our council. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go to executive session. When we get out of executive session, the only thing that will happen is we may have some action to approve changing directional arrows in the traffic circle. So there will be an item of business taken up after executive session. So if you would like to hear that item of business, you're walking the way outside, where it's cold.
Wait a minute, changing the arrows on the circle? Is there a question which way they point?
It should drive the arrows in the traffic circle. Here you go, motion, we add the fail. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.